Just before we go on the air, that's good.
Good.
Now, now hold off.
Now it's okay.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Yountville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, April 21st, and I'd like to call the meeting to order. Before we proceed with our agendized items, I would like to ask everyone in attendance to share in a moment of silence in the memory of Ella Gates, one of our founding family members here in Yountville, who helped, she was very instrumental, she and her husband, in the original formation of our town, who passed away recently at the age of 93. And so, we'd like to have a moment of silence in her honor at this time. And just as a reminder, Councilmember Mueller, can you just explain a little bit about the film that was done with an interview, a recent interview about Ella? Is that still available on our website, do we know?
Sam and I are working on getting those posted to the website, so we'll let you know once they go live.
Great, thanks very much. Okay, let's move on to roll call, please.
Councilmember Mueller?
Here.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hall?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. Thank you, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I would like to recognize and welcome Vice Mayor Hall to my right side instead of my left side, it's gonna take me a minute or two to get used to that.
Thank you.
Adoption of tonight's agenda, do we have any changes, corrections, or is there action on the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you. Public comment, now is the time, anything not on our agenda would be the time to bring it forward to the council. Anyone out there interested in that? No? Okay. Moving on to our consent calendar, we have one item on there, to receive and file a monthly financial report. Is there action on our consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you, a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous also. Moving on to our first presentation, Cal Fire Public Safety Quarterly Report, welcome.
Good evening, council. I'm Steve Hawkes, Battalion Chief for Cal Fire, Napa County Fire here in the Yountville Battalion. I'd like to present my quarterly report for the first quarter. We ran a total of 402 calls out of Yountville Station for the first quarter. Of those, 84 calls were to the town of Yountville, which represents about 21% of our call volume for the quarter. 53% were to the California Veterans Home, and about 26% were to the unincorporated areas of Napa County. And this is up from 364 calls compared to this quarter last year. Major events, we had a structure fire on Vine View, was highly visible, I'm sure, from the town here, as well as along Highway 29. Difficulties were, in a rural setting, as typical as water supply, and took a little while to get that established, but didn't affect the outcome of the incident at all. It was a well-established structure fire at the time we received the call. We also responded to a structure fire in the community of Angwin, where our crews from Yountville Station responded up to assist with that structure fire. And we had another structure fire where many of our crews from Napa County responded into the city of Napa for a multifamily dwelling structure fire. Special events, we hosted the Leadership Napa Valley Class at Yountville Station. We had them for an hour, where we gave a small presentation on the fire service in Napa County, then we split them into three groups, and had a demonstration on CPR, vehicle extrication, and our, with our Truck 12 aerial operations on structure fires. It was a great day, we hope everyone enjoyed themselves as we did, and our only complaint was, it wasn't long enough. We'd like to see it a little bit longer to give them a little more opportunity to see what we do.
It was a little hot that day, too.
It was a little warm.
Your guys were getting a little bit, a little overheated.
It's good for them, they need to get used to the heat in their gear, so. We also participated in the Taste of Yountville, as we do every year, with our Fire Explorers, hosting a booth where we sell ribs and hot dogs, and it was a successful year again this year for us, and so we appreciate that opportunity. The Explorers use the money that they raise there to attend the California Academy for Explorers, that happens once a year, where they receive additional training in the fire service. And they attended that last week. Training, we have every time, start of January, every year, we have a volunteer academy that we host for all new volunteer firefighters that want to be a part of Napa County Fire Department, and so that's ongoing, and we'll finish up about the 1st of May with that. We hosted, or didn't host, we attended a mutual aid drill with the city of Napa, we do every February, as well as American Canyon, St. Helena City, Calistoga, and it gives us the opportunity to work together, train together, make sure that we're communicating well on incidents, and our terminology is appropriate. And this year was held at the Synodome in Napa City, and we don't get the opportunity to work on actual structures that often, and so when we have that, we take advantage of it, and it was a great opportunity for us and all that were involved, and the training was very successful. We have, our Napa County Training Grounds over here, at Rector Dam, we have a new prop for trench rescue, and we had one of our Cal Fire employees from the Riverside Unit, who's an expert in trench rescue, come up and give a two-day class on trench rescue for our crews that deal with our inter-agency response team. And so they told me that the training was well-received, and they learned a lot from Also recently, our Training Grounds was approved by the Office of State Fire Marshal as a training site for confined space rescue operations classes, so now we can utilize it to host classes here, in this area, and train more personnel in confined space rescue. Probably noticed that there's a drought going on outside, and so fire season is fast approaching. It's about a month and a half ahead of schedule, and even a little bit ahead of schedule where we were at this point last year. And for the Snowm Lake Napa Unit of Cal Fire, we're staffing, as of yesterday, one engine per each of our stations in the unit, which again is about six weeks ahead of what we normally would do on a normal year. So, we're getting prepared for what could potentially be a long and dangerous fire season. We'll never know how it's gonna go until we get through it, and a lot of it depends on the fire weather, especially the wind, as we go through fire season. So we're hoping for the best, but preparing for the worst. And a safety message, I know the daylight savings time has passed, but I'd like to remind all residents that if you haven't done so, please take the opportunity to change the batteries in your smoke detectors throughout your house, and also, with the potential for this long fire season that we have, if you live in the wild and urban interface area, please clear around your property, around your structure, to provide us with a good defensible space, that we could come in and help protect your house, as well as good clearance around the road, so we can make access into your property. That's really invaluable for us, to help us do our job, to protect your homes. So, with that, I'd like to thank Louis Chilton, outgoing Vice Mayor, for his service to the community, and giving us the opportunity to work with him. And I'd like to welcome Richard Hall in as the new Vice Mayor, and say we look forward to continuing to work with you. That's my end of my report.
Thanks. One question I had about the status of the use of inmate crews for wildfire, has, wasn't that either canceled for budgets, or something happened to that situation?
With the realignment of inmates from a lot of the state prisons to local prisons there, we've lost a lot of our pool for inmates. We still have a strong camp program within Cal Fire, and they're normally staffed with 15 inmates per crew, and they may be a little bit short of that, depending on the time of the year, and when the inmates can get trained up. But we do have still an existing camp program that's ready for this fire season, and they provide an invaluable service to the state.
It just, it appears you're gonna need all the resources that you can get at your disposal.
I think so, and then some, yeah.
Great. Any questions about the report? Thank you very much, Town Chief.
Thank you.
Next up, I will welcome our other public safety report, the Sheriff's Public Safety Report, and I invite up our Sergeant Doug Wilkinson. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm here to present the quarterly report for the first quarter 2015. In this quarter, the main community event for us was the Taste of Yountville, Yountville Live. Deputies and volunteers from Napa County Sheriff's Posse and town volunteers also worked the event, and our information booth over at the square. We had no law enforcement problems, and due to the new layout of the event, we didn't even have to direct traffic at the Cross Rock this year, so it worked out really well for us. We've had no personnel changes in the Yountville Station. As for crime trends, as you can see in the comparison charts, categories of reported crimes, arrests, and traffic collisions are all within averages of the last five years. There were six crimes against people, all were misdemeanor assaults, with no felonies reported. There were only six crimes against property, which is down from 11 last year, and nine in 2013. Four of those were felonies, and two were petty thefts. There were no residential burglaries reported this quarter. The only category that continues to rise is the number of calls for service. There were 882, which is more than, 100 more than the first quarter last year, and almost 200 more than the first quarter of 2013. Number of calls for service in the first quarter has increased by 119% since 2011, for this quarter. The statistics in all other categories have remained consistent, and some are even lower, so it doesn't indicate that there's more crime. The deputies have just been working harder, and they had 406 self-initiated activities this quarter, compared to 234 last year.
Could you explain an example of some of those, either self-initiated, or just the calls for service, what are we talking about there?
A call for service is any time a call is received, or a deputy goes out and does something like a traffic stop, or a pedestrian check, or a bike stop, or anything, any, any time anybody does anything, they create an event. And so that's where the calls for service are generated. That's everything that everybody does, whether it's called in by a citizen, or something that we go do. And then the self-initiated things are broken down, and like I say, they include pedestrian checks, vehicle checks, traffic stops. If somebody self-initiates on a parking issue, any of those kind of things would be self-initiated, they're not, not as a result of a citizen calling in.
Okay, thank you.
It does not appear that there are any identifiable trends in crime that are cause for concern, based on those statistics, everything seems to be staying pretty average. As for traffic enforcement and collisions, there were five traffic collisions this quarter, only one involved in a minor injury of a pedestrian in a crosswalk. There were no fatalities. We continued to focus on traffic issues this quarter, and did directed enforcement using the Department of Motorcycles in January. With their help, we issued 65 citations this quarter, compared to 15 that were issued last year at this time. However, we're not being heartless, there were 174 vehicle stops made, and 109 of them received warnings. Total number of citations, including park, including parking citations, increased from 171 last year to 218 this year. There were six vehicle abatements, all of them were on public land. Three were towed, and three, three of them gained compliance by abatement letters. For a highlighted case this quarter, even though it was definitely outside the town limits, I did want to talk about the incident on March 16th at Doll Vineyards, where two individuals lost their lives. Our reporter that I talked to said, if this occurred in a larger city, it may have not even made the newspaper, but this is Yountville. In our normally, you know, peaceful little town, this type of tragedy affects everybody in the community, and it became national news. We may never fully understand the psychological process that led to the violence, but we're more, we are thankful that more innocent people weren't injured, killed. Our deepest sympathies go out to the families and everyone in the community affected by the loss. And lastly, I would also like to congratulate Vice Mayor Hall on his new position.
Thank you.
Even though it was in the county, our deputies did respond to the scene of that incident.
Yes. Yeah, me and Cal were the first ones there.
Yeah, so it was, it was still very much impacted and felt by, by the two of you and our community, so we want to acknowledge that.
Yep. So that concludes my report. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Councilmember Dornbecker?
Excuse me, I'm confused about the level of calls for service, and it seemed to me, when you were first talking about it, you did include in there a vehicle stop, stopping, and it seems like other things that were self-initiated. Did you include those in that number, or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, the, basically, what it boils down to is the reason that the calls of service are higher is because our, our people were out there doing more self-initiated activity, and so that increased that number.
Can you give me any idea of what, you know, the 800 of those calls were for? You know, were they 911 calls, and?
I mean, I can say that's every call that we handled. So it could be anything that was reported by a citizen, as well as any self-initiated activity that any of our officers did. So I mean, as far as a bulk of the type, it's across the board. It's just everything from traffic stops, to people calling and barking dogs, to anything.
I see.
Anything and everything goes under that category.
Well, thank you.
It's not necessarily a crime, but it's an incident that your deputies or you respond to, so you have to document it?
Right. Yep. And anything and everything that we do or respond to, whether, you know, results in a criminal investigation or not, anything that we do is counted in that number of activity reports.
Councilmember Mueller?
Have any arrests been made in the wine heist from the French Laundry?
Not that I know of. Last I heard, they were still investigating it, they had some leads, but I don't believe any arrests have been made.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, there has to be a trail there somewhere, it would seem.
Drop some grape juice.
Any other questions about the report?
No, thank you.
Sergeant, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we welcome Scott Owens to give our Napa County Library Commission Annual Report. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Dunbar, and members of the Town Council. Thank you for inviting me here this evening. I'm Scott Owens, and I was appointed by the council in June, and confirmed by the Napa County Board of Supervisors in July 2014, to serve Yountville as its Library Commissioner on the Napa County Library Commission. As stated in my presentation to the council last year, my initial goal is to be an informed representative, and a contributing member to the progress in our town, and to serve the community as an advocate for the Yountville Library in Napa County. I've attended all regular meetings of the commission since my appointment, and I'm pleased to provide a report on activities of the Napa County Library Commission. And I brought along a little slideshow to move some things along, there we are. Our library began operation in the 1970s in a single room in the Yountville Town Hall, and has grown to the hub of activity at its current location in the Yountville Community Center. March 2015, just last month, marked five years at its new location. The library's staff is a core group of dedicated staff members, including Ruth Barney, Master of Library and Informational Science, and Kiki Revoir, Master of Fine Arts. They promote programming and ensure consistent operations. In addition to their expert knowledge of library science, Ruth is the curator of the Napa County Library's Wine and Hospitality, Cooking, Consumer Health, and Relationships collections. And Kiki, a practicing artist, creates welcoming displays for our library. Ruth and Kiki are assets to our branch. We've enjoyed regular program at the library, and this is beyond the recurring sessions, such as Family Reading Time. Recent programs include Health Benefits of Meditation with Visiting Physician, Researcher, and Author, Dr. Marshall Zaslow. The Napa Valley Genealogical Society provided an overview of their services and instruction on how to trace your family tree, using free services at the Napa Library and the society. A sugar skull-making workshop in October, in advance of Dia de los Muertos, was seen by, with almost 70 children and parents who attended the workshop on a Saturday morning in early October. This cross-cultural awareness and participation in collaboration with the Napa Valley Museum, based right here in Yountville. And I highlight these programs to show that they're interactive, they're frequent, they're informative, and most often based on the collections that we have in our Yountville We have also interactive displays that are recurring. They're thought-provoking displays, and have included banned books, and pictured here is Ms. Pat Alexander, the Director of Education for the Napa Valley Museum, and by the way, Pat wrote the book on Nap, on Yountville history, literally. It's available at the Napa Valley Museum, and of course, our library. It's a great read, great gift. I encourage you to check it out if you haven't yet, it's 200 years of history of our little town here. Also, Valentine's Day was a big display, and Hipster Bill is currently on display. And we have our family pictured here in the lower right corner, right here in our world-class town with the down home vibe. Also, Women's History Month was featured in March, and again, Dia de los Muertos, we see at the top left corner of this display, doubled as a program, and a display, I'm sorry, the top right corner there.
Next slide?
Thank you. And next, I'd like to speak about our Friends and Volunteers. The Friends of the Library group was established in 1987 to support the Yountville Main Library. Over the years, the membership has grown to nearly 50 members, which consists of individuals, families, and businesses. In addition to raising funds to support the library's various activities, many of our friends volunteer time to keep the library open during extended hours throughout the week. Ms. Pam Zidell and Carol Fink are among those members with whom I've interacted during recent visits in our volunteer hours. Our volunteer programs are staffed, and we benefit from the service of volunteers in the reading programs and the aforementioned staffing. Some of the activities and agenda items that the commission has covered in these past 10 or so months include the Library Poet Laureate. The commission reviewed applications and recommended Ms. Beckley Wilson for poet laureate to the Arts Council of Napa Valley. It was really exciting to read her poetry, her writings that were local, had a lot of even Yountville flavor, and we were just really pleased to recommend her to the council, and she was appointed by the Board of Supervisors recently. We celebrated the 30th anniversary for literary services in California with a celebration at Napa Main in September, to recognize the countywide work to raise adult literary literacy rates statewide. The program offers adult literary services for English-speaking adults, English preparatory institutes for adults who want to learn English, as well as the Life, Works, Career Center in partnership with Workforce Napa, for teens and adults seeking employment. And our own Lonnie Clark Payne, one of the library commissioners representing Napa County, was featured in a promotional video that ran statewide to celebrate the anniversary. We will select a teen volunteer to the Nap, to the Napa County Library Commission, that is in process, with the application open until April 30th. The selection will take place in May. One item of interest, a recurring agenda item, was the Calistoga Remodel Project. There was a lot of community input there, both from our commission, as well as residents of Calistoga, and the, Napa County is moving forward with a uniform remodel to modernize the building, which is an historic landmark, and has many historic features that many residents and commission members were quite passionate about saving. So those have been incorporated to architectural design, and that is underway. Bylaws and governance. The committee voted to, the commission voted to revise the commission bylaws to reflect a revised meeting schedule, from monthly, Mondays at 4:00 p.m., to the first Thursday of every month, for instance, March 5th, March 7th are coming up, uh, May 7th, excuse me, at 5:00 p.m. This is a later time to allow for public comment, access by individuals who may work full-time, and have more difficulty getting to an appointment at 4:00 p.m., but to allow more public input at a later time. And we have adjusted the election of officers to take place at the March meeting, it had taken place in February. There's been some membership changes, there were three members of the commission who termed off, Jack Bengi, Terry Burkholz, and Kim Wildman, and we recognized their commitment to their communities at our recent meeting. New members include Rodolfo Perez Arroyo, Ms. Stacy Barrett, representing Napa, and Ms. Patty Kruger, now representing American Canyon. At the March meeting to elect the new officers, Ms. Pamela Kindig, who is the former controller of Napa County, was appointed chair, and my fellow commissioners elected me to serve as vice chair of the Napa County Library Commission. Additional topics included broadband enhancements. I have to say, as a new resident in Yountville in 2013, I accessed the Wi-Fi at the library during the construction of my residence and getting things ready, it was great to come here to be able to connect. And our own Yountville Library has received an upgrade of internet speeds from .5 megabytes per second now to 50 megabytes per second, and the broader Napa County Library system is part of the statewide Lighting Up Libraries, a program to ensure access to high-speed internet There was an important meeting in January, and this was with the Library Strategies Consultants. In fact, one of my first interactions with the Friends of the Library was regarding an item of particular interest on the agenda throughout 2014. This was a discussion on the consolidation of the 501(c)(3) Friends of the Library and Library Foundation, so it's American Canyon, Calistoga, Napa, Yountville. There was great concern that the Friends were being, going to do something that they weren't really intent on doing, that is consolidating other operations. So this was a great opportunity for the Friends to come together from all of the branches, and represented there, with the Napa County Library Foundation, Commission, and the Library Director, to discuss some options for creating a better model to support Napa County libraries. A number of options were presented to the meeting attendees and the representatives, and the, the result was, there was, that such a gathering was beneficial to understanding roles in support of systems, locally and countywide, and to expand ongoing communication among commission members, Friends, and the foundation, and that the commission and the foundation will play a strong role in advocacy for the county library. Also, foundation fundraising with plan-giving programs would be promoted by the Friends and the foundations. Ultimately, the Library Strategies Consultant recommended to the group that the groups continue, the Friends, the commissioners, and the foundation, to continue to expand their roles in fundraising and advocacy for the countywide library system. That the commission with the director create an annual advocacy platform to engage Friends and the foundation in efforts to promote greater public support for our libraries. And that the Napa County Library Foundation create a three-year fund development plan, and a plan for working with the commission to create an annual political advocacy campaign. Overall, although there was resistance to change, and the ultimate result was, there was no change, all Friends remained, independent operations, but it was a great way to come together, learn about what each group is doing, and make a plan to do this again, at least annually, to share information on behalf of bettering our library system. And legislation and advocacy, to elaborate there, the California Library Services Act was The California Library Services Act was a bill in 1978, and it was sponsored by retired State Assemblyman John Dunlap. The Napa County Library Director is working on an updated and revised act with Bill Dodd of Napa. And Napa County has a strong involvement in the statewide legislation, which is planned for the future. More information to come on that. And again, some advocacy. And our Library Director communicates regularly to the Commission and other interested parties to alert us to opportunities to connect with our lawmakers, to secure or enhance library funding, both state and national. So we've submitted some letters of support for opportunities for funding, for bills to allow more funding to come our way for our libraries here in Napa County. And a focus on the future. There's a social media campaign with the Napa County Library Commission, Napa County Library. It's called Start Here. It's a marketing campaign. And so there's enhanced presence on the Internet, Facebook, Instagram. And it is my goal to work with our librarians to promote our own library via these methods, with Instagram, and especially with our own Speak Up Yountville and Next Door Yountville. I think these are opportunities to promote the library's program offerings here in our town, and it is a way to join the Napa's, Napa County's overall Start Here campaign, but to brand our own and make our own awareness and our own residents aware of what's happening right here in our library. I think we're poised for a surge of awareness, public awareness of what we offer here, and this in collaboration with Napa County. This will allow us to be independent and promote our own networks, again with Next Door Yountville and Speak Up Yountville. Also, a goal would, is to develop a survey to reach out to our residents, to learn who we serve and what the people want, to take a measure of awareness, to promote our library services, and understand what our residents know about the library and what they'd like to learn from us about our library. Regarding budget analysis, it is my goal to gain a greater understanding of the countywide budget relative to our library. And this implementation I plan to do with Ms. Kindig, the Chair of the Commission, as she is the retired County Auditor Controller. So she's quite aware of where this information is and how to access it. That is something that I'm focusing on in the coming year and look forward to sharing more about. Our current funding model was proposed in fiscal year 2010. It was implemented in 2011. It's a circulation-based revenue distribution model. It intends to be equitable and transparent. It relies heavily, if not solely, on circulation of books from our library. We have quite a few books circulating through our Yountville Library. In 2014, the circulation on average was at 2,586, an average of the months in 2014, September being the highest with 3,223 books circulated. November was the lowest at 1,887. I'd like to report on our visitation numbers, as other libraries do at each Commission meeting. However, there's been an issue with the door counter in our library since August. It's one of the first items I raised at the first meeting. Because we have two entrances to our library, it's difficult to measure an accurate visitation. So it is malfunctioning, and it is on the Public Works list to review and remedy. It is my honor to serve as the Library Commissioner to Yountville and the Vice Chair to the Commission with Ms. Kindig, and I look forward to a deeper dive in my understanding of the budget-related opportunities regarding our branch here in Yountville. I want to continue to promote this asset in our community. And I thought it might be fun to share with you some of the items that I've picked up at the library that I'm reading and watching now. David Mitchell is one of my favorite authors, and because of the Yountville Library, its interlibrary loan system, I've been able to obtain and read all of David Mitchell's books, even his most recent one. I was number 70, that's seven zero on the waiting list, to receive it, but it was delivered to me right here in Yountville. So it's a great way, I've come up with the term, you order in and we'll deliver. Order it here in Yountville, we'll deliver it to Yountville, even if it's countywide. Portlandia Cookbook is another one I discovered that's at our hipster display right now. House of Cards, and Learning How to Play Chess, and Michael Cirello's Cookbook is another favorite currently. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the report.
Very welcome.
Any questions from the council?
No, that's good.
Comment? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you so much. What a thorough report. That's the most thorough report I've seen, and I'm really, I'm grateful for it. That's a lot of good information, and also congratulations on your election.
Thank you.
You'll serve us well.
Thank you very much.
And the community, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. I know, I'm trying to, trying to binge-watch House of Cards myself right now. Okay, we're going to move on to our public hearing for this evening, considering adoption of a resolution approving a master fee schedule, et cetera, et cetera. Kathleen, you going to start us off?
Yes. Mayor, Council, thank you. Yes, tonight before you, for consideration is the master fee schedule for fiscal year As you'll recall, we adopted our initial master fee schedule back in 2011, and it was really a compilation of some fees that had been adopted over the years through ordinance and resolutions, and it really made it better to compile it into one comprehensive document. Makes it easier for staff to manage and better for the public doing business with us to have an understanding of what types of fees and charges that we do have here at the town. So this master fee schedule is before you tonight, and fees are determined through various things, like I said, through ordinances and resolutions, also dictated by state law. And in no case do the fees the town charge exceed the cost of what it costs the town to deliver the service. So keeping that in mind, we did go through the master fee schedule, as we have in the past, and we did adjust some of the fees by CPI for the San Francisco area, and that was two and a half percent. And those are highlighted in yellow on the fee schedule as presented. We did have two new fees that were added during the fiscal year that are now included on the master fee schedule, and those had been previously approved by council. Well, one was actually an increase to an existing fee for the Community Center Heritage Room, and an additional fee that had been adopted back in November for replacement tree and lue fees. And no additional new fees have been added as presented. And really, that's my report, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great. First thing I have is just a, maybe a typo kind of situation here. On the agenda, we have the resolution number with 15 in front, but on the resolution itself, we have dash 15.
We'll take care of that.
So we should be adopting the resolution itself, not what's on the agenda, correct?
It's going to be the 15 in the front.
Thirty-two, fifty-three, dash fifteen is correct.
Flip it, 15 in the front.
It is 15 in the front, okay. And then also on the actual resolution, the headers on each of the
We'll correct it.
Pages still have X's.
We'll correct it.
Okay. A little housekeeping out in there. Okay, questions about the staff report? Vice Mayor?
Well, I know you said that it's only two and a half percent. There was, in the fee schedule itself, I'll see if I can find my notes on here, there was only one or two, they're in green, correct? The new, is the new, the new ones were in green or is the blue ones that were in green?
The, the green does indicate
Was CPI.
Yeah, the, yellow is the CPI.
The green was
The green indicates that it changed by an amount different than CPI.
Okay, and those are the ones, those were, at least the Heritage Room was one that we implemented last year during the course of the year, okay.
Yes, so those are based on the cost.
And the blue ones were the new ones?
Yes, that's correct.
And so I guess my, you know, my only question is, I mean, not that we just create new master fees or fees for things, was there any particular reason why we created new individual swim passes? Was there an outpouring of information requesting that?
We had had them previously, and it, we noticed that in this year somehow it had gotten dropped off the year before, so we just added it back in.
Okay.
But we do sell a few.
Okay. So I just was curious, because I never knew there wasn't one, and then I noticed it was new this year, so I thought maybe it was free. No, okay. No, that's the only question I had, because it was the only ones that were blue, I believe.
Well, the replacement tree and lue fees, yeah.
Sorry, I'm not that far, there we go. But aren't those, aren't the ones that, for the replacement tree, didn't we approve those mid-year as well?
Yes, those were approved by resolution during the year. But, so this is the first time they show up on the master fee schedule.
I see, okay.
That's, I just, I get it.
So they're not green, they're blue, they're sort of
So if the public was reviewing, they would see.
Okay. I have no other questions.
To follow up the Vice Mayor's question about the swim passes, is that returning to the previous fee? There was no adjustment to that, just replacing it in the schedule?
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the council? This is a public hearing, and the public hearing is open for any public comment on this item. Now would be the time. Seeing no public coming forward, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or action. Any further discussion, Councilmember Mueller?
Yep.
Or action, any other discussion?
Well, I just wanted to comment
Yes.
That I was happy to see Section 4 in the resolution about subsidized fees, which gives some latitude in what the council, if someone has a hardship in the community and they approach us, that we do have some latitude, for example, with tree removal permits and, and certain other things. So I was just glad that that is included in the resolution.
Can I get a clarification on that from staff?
The paragraph that Councilmember Dornbecker is referring to is a philosophy that there are a certain category of charges and fees that we do not fully recover the cost, and they run a gamut. For example, the pool, a lot of our park and recreation programming does not fully recover itself. Actually, a tree removal permit and some of our very simple over-the-counter building permit fees are not fully cost-recovered. So what we've attempted to do is subsidize some of those across the board with those areas. And then it also makes reference to the fact that we do have a youth subsidy fund, and that funding structure can also be utilized to support Yountville youth residents in those programs. So it just, it footnotes some of the fact that the council has provided some policy direction to the town that while generally we do a complete cost recovery, there are a certain category that the council has recognized that if we did 100% cost recovery, the individual unit charge would, would, could potentially be counterproductive. We'd rather have people come in and apply for it, receive a tree removal permit, monitor it, and therefore, we end up subsidizing some of the true cost. And then you've made council policy decisions, especially as it relates. I will also say, for example, while most people won't look at this as a subsidization, code enforcement is actually not a very, we don't have good cost recovery on code enforcement, because the goal of code enforcement, we spend a lot of staff time and resources on gaining education and compliance in a hope that we don't have to go further. So there's just areas like that that are incorporated into the fee structure and charges.
Any other questions, Vice Mayor?
I just had a comment, and I would like to just again, you know, reiterate, although this is, the fees that we charge for certain services around the town and in our, and in our community, I mean, by far and away, most of the fees that were presented here in the master fee schedule are held flat, so there's not even a CPI adjustment in that. By the very nature means that we're subsidizing in effect those services that did have cost increased, because all the costs generally do increase. And lastly, that, I'm impressed to see that we can continue to provide the after-school program at the same or similar rates to where we're at, because I know it's such a beneficial program to families that are using the school here and then finding a place to put their children for kinder hour or otherwise. It's really quite a draw for our community to be able to provide that, so congratulations.
And I will also say, one of the things, and we're sort of out of, I will never call rates-steady and master fee schedule perfunctory, but one of the important things that the council did with your policy is, we made the decision that it's better for us to look at all of our fees annually, make small minor adjustments, because, you know, there's no credit given to the council when we go four or five years and go, well, we haven't raised the rates in five years, so therefore, they're going up 20%. It, it's just, when we cover our costs, and this also makes staff go back and look at what we're doing, because in some years, some, some, certain fees have actually gone down, because when we do a cost service, when we change certain technology or thing, it's reduced, you know, if the service we deliver has a high amount of staff time added into it, then that could actually impact it. Another thing that I think is very important to note, a lot of our planning and related fees are actually actual costs. So we don't have a fixed fee. We charge an initial deposit, and, you know, if an applicant provides good quality submittals, we can get them through the process with less staff time, then they receive a benefit by, by not having to pay more. So we, we do have a hybrid system when it comes to how we do service delivery and how we try to look at cost recovery. But you definitely do have a, you know, we have a cost recovery focus, except on those areas where the council has determined that it's appropriate for us to have a level of subsidy. And during your budget, each year is when we have that earlier conversation. You may recall the Budget Parameters Workshop, that's sort of the check-in where if we're going to make any changes on level of subsidy, increase or lower, and, and that guides us. So that's why you see a lot of budget steps that are all sequential to what we're doing as they lay into this time of year.
I'll just add to the, I think the thought process, which is, it's kind of easy for some members of the public to overlook the value that's in this schedule here, that, you know, sometimes we are challenged by how much value is offered our local residents. And there's quite a bit of value in here. There's quite a bit of cost savings, there's nonprofit savings, there's residential savings based on non-residential fees, and, and so this is really a philosophical position we've taken to continue to benefit local residents as much as we can. So, yeah, as, as was stated, costs are really never going down, but we're trying our best to, to moderate them. Any other discussion or is there action on this from the council?
I move that we approve Resolution Number 325-dash-15, adopting the master fee schedule including reaffirming existing fees, adjusting current fees, and adding new fees for fiscal year 2015-2016.
And just for the record, the number, is it 15-dash-3253?
That's correct.
Okay, just because we have a couple different places.
Second?
So a motion to the second, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposition there, thank you very much. Okay, that's our public hearing. We're going to move on to Administrative Regular Item Number One, which is consideration of the Yountville Community Park Conceptual Plan. You're welcome.
Great. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you, you have a fun thing to chat about. This is, as you've noticed, there's been a number of recent high-profile projects occurring at Yountville Community Park in the last few months. Very visible recent improvements include installation of a bioswale in order to address the drainage improvements that needed to be done at the park, as well as a new accessible play surface up at the playground. The park still has some accessibility issues, including the pea gravel picnic area at the southern end of the park. In response to these concerns, a capital improvement project was developed, and the project includes addressing the, the accessibility issue down there. Though the accessibility improvement spurred the beginning of the project, as staff began doing the research, we encountered a condition with the existing elm trees on the site. Recent arborist inspection, and that report is attached in your council packet, has recommended that trees be removed. As the report states, the trees have been performing poorly in recent years, and the arborist found that the trees showed traits that could be symptoms of the Dutch Elm disease. Due to the aggressive nature of this disease, the trees will continue to decline and become more and more of a hazard. The report states that the most reasonable approach to mitigate the future hazard would be to remove the trees while they can still provide good wood for reclamation. The project also includes replacing the elm trees with a number of flowering pear trees. But because these elm trees have been an important element to the park for many years, it's proposed that the arborist could remove the trees and use the wood for park benches to be placed at the park, so using the same wood from the elm trees to create furniture then for the park. Further Further accessibility improvements are proposed for the sculpture garden picnic area, as well as the playground picnic area there up the, by the playground under the redwoods. Now, town staff issued a request for proposals, reached out to a number of landscape architects for a design of the park, and ultimately chose Peter Went Landscape Architecture for the project. The consultant's conceptual design includes removal of the elm trees, the replanting of numerous trees, and the removal of the pea gravel, and installation of a natural, more accessible surface. Here tonight is Peter Went, who will be able to present after me a little bit more information about these conceptual drawings that are included in the packet and are also posted on the wall there. Two conceptual designs were presented to the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission for review on March 27th of this year. Both designs included the improvements mentioned above, but also with differing layout of trees. The preferred plan, as decided at that meeting, was conceptual plan A, which is the one above, over on the wall. It's recommended by the commission. Preliminary conceptual plans have also included early estimates of the total project cost. Though these are very ballpark figures, the cost will be near $185,000, even though these estimates do not include those costs that are associated with drainage of the site. There's still a little more drainage work that will be done once all of this work is completed. The engineer's estimate is necessary to know a more accurate number. Capital Improvement Project, CP 2015, which is our ADA improvements, will cover a lot of this, and it currently has a balance of approximately $65,000 for this year, though this project is definitely considered to be completed next fiscal year, though a lot of the designs can be completed this fiscal year. The project has changed since last year's budget approval, primarily due to the costs associated with the removal and replacement of the trees, which was not previously known. So that concludes staff's report of this project. We now have, can give time to Peter Went if it is okay with council, but before...
Yeah, before we go on to that, let's see if we have any questions about your presentation. Are there any from council vice mayor?
So I believe what you said is that the original request or the estimate on the cost is $185 for the first or the A schematic proposal, correct?
Right, right now, conceptual plan A has a very rough estimate of being about $185,000.
Excluding the tree removal?
That includes everything associated with the trees.
Okay, and then we don't know what the rough estimate of schematic B might be? Should that be something that was chosen?
It would, it's predicted that it would be pretty similar. The difference really is just the layout of the trees.
A short thumbnail for you is the rough cost of the total new project, and I think that's a good way to look at this. The original project, and I think the mayor is very familiar with focusing on us trying to get a DG surfacing, we had indicated that would be in the $75,000 range, and that was what we put in the money. Staff research has really indicated that in order to do the project right, we're going to have consequences if we don't deal with the trees. In other words, if the trees have to come out, then they're going to perhaps damage or impact the surface treatment. So we restructured, took a more holistic approach. And when you look at the project estimate, and again, this is a very conservative project estimate. If anything, I think, and I'll let the Public Works Director comment, we think if anything, the numbers might come down. But you know me well enough to know I tend to be conservative and early. So what you really have is the removal of the trees, the installation, and the cost and acquisition of large, we're not putting little thumbnail, and I'll let Peter talk to that more. These are significant box trees, so that we create some presence in there. And that's really what's driving the cost increase. The, if you look at the budget estimate that's in there, the amount for the, what's called terrapave treatment is pretty close to the 75. The other thing that I'll just highlight briefly, we're also expanding the project a little bit to do accessibility for all of the picnic areas, including two additional ones in addition to the area we commonly refer to as the pea gravel area. So the project, I hate to use the word project creep, but I think in this particular case, there's been a change in the project, and it's grown recognizing there are several things. And if we're going to go into the park, let's do it comprehensively and get all of the ADA accessibility issues. Do it right, which is also why it went to the Park and Rec Advisory Commission, done a whole number of things. So it's not your, it's that old Buick commercial. This is not, this is not your father's ADA pea gravel project. It is now that and more.
Satisfy your question?
For now.
Councilmember Dornbecker, you have a question?
Yes, please. You said that the pea gravel will be replaced with something that is, you know, another kind of material that is drainage. Can you elaborate? What kind of material?
Peter will be able to do a better job than I will with that. It's an accessible, so be able to go on a wheelchair, permeable surface that he'll be able to...
Yeah, permeable surface, but it will, but wheelchairs will be able to...
Correct.
Really? I'm looking forward to finding out about it. Thank you.
Councilmember Mueller, any questions at this time?
No.
I have a question about, I'm a little confused about your, we have the attachment about the preliminary cost estimate for the park picnic areas. And I see that roughly totaling $172,000. But you're talking about, I heard a number, $185,000 plus drainage. So could you just walk me back through what is this whole thing costing us and what all is included in that price tag?
In the preliminary cost estimate attachment, we see it separated among the three areas, the main picnic area, the sculpture gardener, garden area, and the playground picnic area. Those costs do not include the removal of the elm trees. And so that's why those numbers will come up to the roughly 160, 170. We then also attach the removal of the elm trees and the fabrication of benches.
So the fabrication is included in your estimate that gets to the 185?
Correct.
Okay.
And a reminder, this is still...
Conceptual.
Exactly.
Yes. So since we're really only being presented the one option and we're not really looking at the other, I know you've placed it up here, and you've said it's just the configuration of the trees. But I see that your, the conceptual plan includes a water element. And I'm wondering if you could elaborate on what kind of consideration was given to the current drought conditions we're in? And is it appropriate for us to be adding in a water element to a public area like this?
See, and this is all still part of the conceptual plan that was thrown in. It could be a sculpture. It could be a water element. It could be a barbecue. It's more on the conceptual plan, more of there will be some kind of thing there in that space.
Basically, it's instead of having trees in a circle in the middle and having a wide-open space, you want something in the middle of interest? Okay. Great. Well, that's all the questions I think we have for you right now. And we certainly welcome additional information. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Dunbar and council. I have some additional graphic information, if I could distribute that before I get started.
If you could actually just pass it on over here, and we'll get it set up here. Thank you.
Can I have yours back when we're done?
Yes, you may.
This packet is simply the two plans with three additional pages of plant material that is intended for use in the park, just to give you more of a visual in terms of what we're intending to use. First of all, the terrapave surfacing is, it is somewhat pervious. It's not, it's not completely porous. It's made of a natural earthen material with a pine resin. And the resin holds it, kind of holds it together to be a smooth surface. There will be some absorption. During heavy storms, there will be runoff. But everything will be graded to the, toward the new swale. And the, I think the factor that, or one of the factors that brought people to prefer option A is that we're proposing to do some understory planting under the two rows of trees. One, one area is along Lincoln Avenue, and the other area is along the new walkway that has recently been built in the park. And with those planting areas and natural sloping of the surface, it'll be minimal sloping, but following existing contours. You'll have a lot of that runoff going into the planting areas as well. So there's certainly an absorptive capability in storm conditions. The swale is really more of an overflow, given this design. The flowering pear trees were suggested because they have a beautiful white spring color, and they have a kind of a screaming orangish-red fall color. And it's just a good, bug-free seasonal tree that you can, that you can get in size. And I think it's important that, given the shade that will be lost with the removal of the elms, we want to create shade as quickly as possible with new planting. So if we bring in a 48-inch box tree or larger, we can get trees in the ground that are already above your head in terms of branching height and tall enough to provide shade immediately, and then it'll just get better from there. The, the understory planting is intended to be drought-tolerant planting on a drip system, so no overhead spray. Water use can be conservative. And, and for safety, I'd like the plant to be fairly low so that you see above the understory planting and below the canopy of the trees, so there's visibility through the park. And then lighting has also been suggested to be added for evening use. As mentioned earlier, the fountain was simply a placeholder. We've talked about putting a couple of larger barbecue elements in that central space. And the space lays out so that it provides maximum flexibility in terms of use of the picnic tables. The entire space can be used by one large group, or you can have a series of smaller groups using that space, depending on how you reserve for any given event. Additional planting is intended along both sides of the new swale as well. Right now, it's just a mulch area, and again, drought-tolerant planting is intended to be added there. In the, what we call the sculpture garden, it's the, it's the garden with the giant globe in it right now. The picnic area in proximity to that is intended to be paved with the terrapave as well. But, but there are a couple of redwood trees in there, and we'd like to kind of protect them by keeping the paving away from them and putting mulching around them and allowing people to walk freely around them. And then similarly with the playground picnic area, you'll see that the terrapave area is intended to be somewhat restricted, whereas right now, people walk through amongst redwood trees and kick the bark around. It's intended to be a little bit more of a controlled area and keeping the redwood trees somewhat protected. The number of picnic tables shown on the plan meets or exceeds what's currently at the park. I think we're at the same number at the large picnic area, and we exceed numbers in the other two, so we're certainly good there. And I think the intended plants are all shown on your appended pages there. The Chinese pistachio on the last page was, was one of the trees that was intended for the second option. So not to be included in option A.
And there's no, not yet anyway, the proposed lamppost, there's no example of what's being proposed for a bollard lighting for the pathways?
Actually, the town has an approved standard. If you recall, the, we have the town streetlight standard, and you also have the lights that are here out front in Town Hall and in Vandeleer Park. So it'll be a combination of that standard or a bollard in that same family.
Okay. Other questions? Is this Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes, thank you. I like option A a lot. And from what I can see, the, in the large picnic area, the picnic tables all seem to be associated with the tree line.
Yes. The intention is that they keep fairly close to the shade. Picnicking, you want to be, want to have some protection around you.
That's a great idea.
It just seemed, and it also allows the middle of the area to be more flexible, open for circulation.
And then, will the permeable surface be there and in the other places that I see the tan?
Yes.
I see. Okay, thank you.
And actually, I forgot to add that the existing concrete pad that is designated for accessible picnic tables, we're talking about taking that piece of concrete out and making it all-inclusive so that it's for the entire community and anyone can use any picnic table anywhere.
That's adjacent to the restrooms currently, yeah. Councilmember Mueller, questions?
I have a question about the flowering pear trees. Now, these say they're the new flowering pear trees, because my history with pear trees is you really want to plant, they look good for a while, and then they start cracking and breaking, and we have a lot of those.
Yes. There's the Bradford pear, which, which has problems, but there's the new Bradford, which apparently is a new cultivar that is much more bulletproof. And that's what we intend to propose.
So they're not going to, 10 years from now, be a problem, start cracking and splitting and falling apart, like?
No, they, the new Bradford strain, for some reason, has, I think it's just been a biogenetic manipulation that's, that's given horticulturists what they want, so... They seem to have good results.
All right, good. Thanks.
Let me just, a little supplement to Mother Nature.
Vice Mayor? Yes, thank you for sharing this with us. And it's hard to see there, and it was hard to see on the, on our lap, iPads, whatever these things are. I'm not sure, and I don't know if this is a question for you or for Nathan or perhaps the Public Works, was the, the cost of the lamps also included in the original proposal? So the lighting was not included in that?
Typically, the lighting is provided by the town. So we would provide the lighting. It would be installed by the contractors. That's typically the way we...
In addition to the 185 that we're talking about?
Yeah, one of the, two of the, the two of the lights are, there are two lightstands in place. However, we would replace those with the town-approved standard lights and add one additional light.
But that's over and above the budget, is the question I'm hearing.
Correct, but I also want...
Okay.
Reading into your, remember, we also have another parallel project, which is finishing this park, and then we've probably never touched the park for five years at least, it will seem like comparatively. You have another project already approved with funding this year that we're working on for the parking improvements. And one of the expectations that we have when we're trying to improve the parking is that that budget will include some of the lighting. So that project will, will be where we're charging the lighting standards and the installation so that people can see from the very north end as they walk through on the eastern perimeter of the park, along the pathways where that lighting will be added. And we're talking in the neighborhood of four to six light standards at about $4,000 each.
Thank you. I'm sorry to me to ask the question of all them, because I did want to ask you a different, slightly different question. And it's, you know, as we're revisioning this park and what we're trying to do in what would be technically the south end of the park, and I see that we've sort of done that. You know, one of the thoughts that comes to mind is, did you consider or evaluate what it would look like if the existing lawn on what would be the west side of the sidewalk going up was revisioned into something that was more or less, that is, water-intensive? Because today, it's grass, but it's a narrow strip of probably 10 feet by maybe 100, and it's a great place to hide Easter eggs for really little kids, but it may not necessarily be such a great use of water.
But let me, I'll just take Peter off the hot spot because his project... No, the scope of his project, town staff is already working, our parks crew and Public Works. Based on landscape and drought-tolerant plant materials, we're putting together, as was briefed at your last council meeting, we will be taking out a number of small turf pockets. You just described one of those that's actually on our list. That, that turf strip between the walkway and the fence is one of those that's identified for taking out and replacing with native landscape materially. Similarly, I'm going to change parks, but you have a similar approach in Veterans Memorial Park, along the pathway and the fence. And we've got some small turf areas and a lot of our pocket park areas. So all of those are going to be done in a separate program. Right now, staff is working on that. And we're also going to take advantage of some of the grant programs that are expected to be released by the state. So we want to have a program, but there is a master plan for that, and it'll be based on a lot of the plant palette borrowing from Peter's concepts in this park.
What I'll say is, I had the exact same question, and so there's no way for us to know...
Nope.
...that you had that planned, because we look at this and there.
And that's why, right, this is a project, and you're morphing into several things, and I do think it's good questions, because the project scope is one thing, but you're right, when you look at the net effect of the park, we have basically, you know, we just finished a couple projects, we've got two more we're working on, and when we're concluded in about nine months, I think you're going to have a park that you're incredibly proud of, and really will have addressed a number of things over time that the council's been identifying.
Right, okay.
One thing I do want to just point out, when you look at this spot, because this was a big programming issue from Parks and Rec, we wanted to make sure that the activity area could support large community events like Focus, Yountville Days, but still have a capacity to be intimate for smaller groups. So that's why you're seeing a large programming space where the renter can bring in tables, fill in and use it. One thing I would suggest is, if you want to provide guidance on no-water feature, this would be the time to do that, if that's appropriate. And then we will work on programming, because I will point out, the manager is not fond of putting a barbecue there, because I'm actually looking at limiting where barbecue's in the center point, but I think we could work on a focal piece of some sort. I would probably suggest that you're right, in the middle of a drought, while we're telling people they can't put new swimming pools in, it's probably not the time for the town to add a water feature.
Vice Mayor, you have more?
Yes, thank you. And just a follow-on question, I think you had suggested that underneath where the, where the new paving, the terrapave would be, that they were going to be contoured so that if there was any surface runoff, it was going to be going into the beds? Can I, I'm not exactly sure. Are there beds under the trees that are going to be?
Yes, those are planting beds, and they're also intended to provide some separation from Lincoln Avenue to the pedestrian service, as well as from that new path where you might have bicycles or, you know, people running, just kind of creating some kind of buffer while allowing some access points through. But in general terms, the entire site slopes from both points down to that swale.
Down to the swale, okay.
So the picnic area will all flow that way in a rainstorm.
Okay. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm going to, while we're talking bicycles, I'm not seeing, and maybe I'm missing any bike parking areas, since we are right along the bike path. I'm seeing heads go up and down, but I'm not seeing anything here. You're going to add it to this, right?
They aren't shown...
But they're there.
They aren't shown on the plan, but we have purchased them part of a grant program, at what's very little cost to the town, five additional bike racks to be placed there in the park.
Okay.
Some will be up at the north end, up by the playground, and others will be down there at the bathroom, restroom area.
Okay, thank you. As proposed here, in the spirit of the town manager's comment about leaving this a very versatile main picnic space, is the proposal right now with these barbecues or any other feature in the middle to be permanent? Like, the barbecues, are they supposed to be permanent there, or are they easily movable?
I believe they're movable. The town has been looking at, staff has been looking at barbecues that are self-contained so that all the ash, when it's cooled, drops into the container below, so that's a self-contained...
And we may be getting into too much detail.
The goal would be that they would be permanent, so we really, we're leaning away from putting something permanent in that center space.
Okay.
And more locating them closer to what individual picnic sites would be.
I'd like to hear that. And are we still talking, though, about using charcoal? That's our answer, as opposed to any kind of gas?
Yes.
Okay. And there was discussion about that?
There was, there was brief discussion, but I think it's just research that I've read, the cost associated with putting in gas grills, and then also the usability features for people, and kind of a high level of risk, really, when you're looking at natural gas outweigh what I think we really want to expose ourselves to.
Okay. And then, since you have the microphone close to you right now, I'll ask you this question. Is there any impact on how we provided the park up from a rental perspective, or are they all, all the use is basically the same, and the fees stay the same and all that?
So the use would be similar. We are looking at, that bottom site would be, we would add to, it would actually be split into two sites, so we would have four sites total on that part, at the north park. And then, people could reserve both of the lower-end sites to, for a large picnic area. So basically, it would be a 275 areas, but if you have a large event, it would be, could be combined into a 150. So that's, that's the current proposal. So we would have Site 1 near the playground, that would be existing, and then we would have Site 2, which is down the path, close to the World Sculpture, and then the bottom, south end of the park would have two sites.
Okay.
So we don't anticipate raising fees. Those are pretty stagnant.
We're not losing any flexibility, we're actually adding some flexibility?
No, we're actually gaining flexibility, yes.
Okay. And then the last question I have, Peter, for you, is I'm assuming that we, this, the species of tree that you're talking about populating pretty heavily here has a very kind and gentle root system that is not going to be disrupting anything around it?
You're correct. You know, all trees have root systems, the, some are very invasive and some are much less invasive, and the new Bradford pear is less invasive. And being planted in planting areas as well certainly will help to contain the roots from the paved surface. So I don't see any issues there in the long term with root damage.
And in terms of the existing redwoods, they integrate okay, there's no problem with, you know, the elm trees presented a problem, but the redwoods are okay?
Redwoods are fine, yeah. They're an indigenous tree, and they, they're flourishing out there, so no problem there.
Okay. Great, well, that's all, those are all the questions I had. Councilor, oh, Councilor Mueller?
I'm not really sure who these questions, I guess the first one's for Steve. So, there is no recycled water that goes out to the park, correct?
That is correct. When, the town has obligated all of our recycled water to the current pipeline system. We don't have an internal infrastructure. I will point out...
We have no pipes.
We have no pipes that would get it there.
At that end of the town.
And I will also point out, we did evaluate the cost analysis of that. One of the challenges for us is the cost at that point in time to put a new pipeline system, to bring it up for this very small amount of actual usage, because that's the other problem we have, is our parks are small, and the amount of usage that they would have didn't have a, it did not have an acceptable return on investment.
Okay. Well, because it was leading to my next question, because I know, I talked to Samantha about this, I thought it would be fun to have, you know, a little splash park for the kids, you know, and all that is recycled. What, it's a recirculation?
The, I mean, what I'm just saying, it's a policy issue for the council, because the current programs that we have do allow for water features with recirculation. And we've had this discussion about where to do that. Part of our challenge is, you know, we have a relative fixed cost, and do we put more features at the pool? Where do we, where do we draw the line on what pool or what resources we're doing? But that's a council call. If you want us to include a water feature in there, then we, that'll have design cost impacts. It may not be the best area here to do something like that, because it is, this is our large group function area, and having kids running through and doing a splash park, that may not, that may actually impact it, but that could be something that we could add at a future point.
At least we'll know where they all are, they'll all be in that one spot, so. And then, my last question's the historic monument that has the church bell?
Mm-hmm. It's still there.
It's still in the same place, the, the...
In the tree.
The orange rectangle under the redwood trees.
It's that, it's that brown rectangle at the very southern end.
And it kind of anchors the...
I think it's orange.
It's inside the existing redwood, blue, it doesn't move.
No, it doesn't move, yeah.
With round the other dots. Okay. Small, one more question.
In fact, the space was designed on that axis to that monument, so that it's visible from all the tables.
Okay.
It'll be more accessible, actually, when we're done.
Sure.
More prominent.
Great, well, thank you very much. I'll invite any members of the public that are here to comment on this item if they would like.
Thank you.
Seeing none others, just to give a little bit more direction from the council, I would be opposed to any water feature of any kind. I think it's totally inappropriate, given our current conditions. I also remember, from a splash pool perspective, we talked about that when we were renovating the swimming pool, our community pool, and we started running across all kinds of regulations, health code, you know, regulations that made it so ridiculously restrictive that it wasn't worth the effort even then, and that was years ago. I have to believe there are even tighter restrictions now. But other thoughts that we can provide council or staff for direction? Vice Mayor?
Yes. So I'm glad to see the pea gravel would be going away. This has obviously been a challenge in any of our events. I mean, we've seen people's wheelchairs and walkers get stuck, so it's a long time coming. I mean, this is a focal point for the town, so obviously, we need to do it right. It's got to be emblematic of the community, and I think we all know what that means from a Yountville standpoint, it's something we should be proud of. Steve's words, not mine, I'm just echoing that. And really, there's not a better way for us to manage the resources that we have. I mean, this is giving back to the community, so, I mean, if these are the investments, and it seems like it's very well put together, so thank you for all your efforts, and, you know, I would, I would echo again, you know, what the mayor said, I don't think there's the need for a water feature. I would like to see, and this is, I'm sure everyone on this council would like to see, what's this, you know, when we roll it all up, what's this really going to cost? Because I think we can champion these things and these changes, but let's also be transparent and clear about what we're going to spend to do that. It is, it is the biggest, it is the biggest piece of town property on the north end of the town, so let's make it look right, let's make it be user-friendly and something that everyone can enjoy. It looks like it'll be a fantastic project when we're finished, but we'll see. I look forward to seeing this come forward and get a final approval, but it looks pretty good to me in general. I think people really take advantage of it.
Thank you. Councilor Mueller, any more thoughts?
Well, I just wanted to kind of bring it to everyone's attention that when George Yount actually laid out the original Yountville, and this is part of his original grant, where most of the town isn't, that he laid this out as the original town square. And it got added on to later, but I think, you know, that it's very important to keep that forefront in everyone's mind, that this is our original piece that George wanted here, so I'm really glad it's going to stay a park and we're going to improve it. So, and I'm fine with either A or B design, I really don't see whatever kind of works out with budget and everything else, I think they're both good.
Thank you. Councilor Dornbecker?
Thank you. I have a couple of concerns, one being that recently, when I was at the League of California Cities Community Services Policy Committee, throughout the state, communities are very concerned about the surfaces that we're putting in the playgrounds that have the rubberized. There are emissions from it that are a little frightening to the communities, and could be associated with health risks and things. So I realize that we have done that, and I, you know, that is finished. What I would like to see, because of this other permeable surface with resin, I would like to see the, you know, a report on it, if you could forward something to me about it that I could read, so that I could, you know, have my fears assuaged, that it would too, would be put in, and then we would find out that there are, you know, the children playing on those bouncy surfaces now, throughout the state, many of the municipalities are either thinking of suing or, you know, redoing them. So I think it's an important issue to look at this ahead of time, and then we'll have to, you know, possibly revisit when the state weighs in on those bouncy, rubberized flooring things. So if you could please, you know, send me something that I could read that would, I could feel better about, and any studies that are on that other surface, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
A couple of things to address, several of things. Certainly, we'll send some information to all of you about the terrapave product. I do want to share your concern that staff did a lot of research, and the surface that we put in on our playgrounds is not the same surface that's recently been having some of the conversation. I won't say that it isn't without elements, but Nathan has some research that I will have him send all of you about that surface.
I'd appreciate it.
Because some people just mix the surface because it looks similar without knowing the composition of what's in, but I do want, you know, everybody to know that, one, not all of the surfaces are the same in how they use the integrated material, and this is, you know, just like some of you have seen the artificial turf, especially like at sports campuses and stuff, it's not the same material. But the good news is, we have some of that material, and we'll make sure all of that is shared with you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I remember bringing that issue up, and Nathan responding to it, that there were some citizen concerns about the ground-up rubber tire component, and that wasn't the surface that we were using, it's a surface that's been used in other jurisdictions. The general public doesn't differentiate between one product and another because they are similar, but we certainly aren't going to intentionally put in any surface that...
No.
...is going to cause any kind of health or safety issues. I just wanted to say, one of the keys for me is to keep this main picnic area completely open and fully flexible. As much as I would like to see something in the middle like a sculpture or some kind of element, having been to so many events where we're setting up tents and the flexibility of special events that happen there, having nothing to obstruct that space, I think, would be a very valuable addition to the design. I do like virtually all the elements I like here. Just a slight concern that we've almost overshadowed the parking, or the picnic tables, and that hopefully, there's not too much debris that falls from these new Bradfords that is going to cover all the tables and everyone's, you know, food and picnic with white blossoms or red fiery, and that's the only concern I have about that, but if it's not ants, it might be a few fallen blossoms, and that's part of the charm of picnicking, right? But I think that'll commend staff and Peter your work, and I think this is going to be a beautiful enhancement. The only other thing that I had, as I was sitting here looking at this, the very point at the south end, I, I don't have an answer, but I'd like to see something a little bit more substantial and identifiable there, and that might be a sculpture component. I know that's where we have the identifier sign and some flowers, but it being our signature park, I think it might warrant at least consideration of something there. Still identified as Yountville Community Park, but maybe having some kind of special sculpture element down there in that area.
I certainly think, there's two things I would say. One is, we can certainly add a sculpture pad that gives us some flexibility for that. And I think you're also right, that in this particular case, while we generally have, I like to refer to the Yountville sign aesthetic as understated, in this case, I think the understatedness of the existing sign may present a problem, that some people don't realize they've reached the park, especially if they're not familiar. So we may want to look internally at a slightly larger sign entry that's appropriate for that park reflected, yeah, so.
Well, our Public Works staff has already done a really good job of removing what used to overgrow the sign so you couldn't read it.
But we'll, yeah, we have, but I think, we will, I think we can work on those two elements. Just to bring closure, so everybody knows what'll be happening, we'll take all of these comments, staff's been writing notes, Peter's been writing notes, we'll get that. This will go out to bid, and that will be what helps to get our refined numbers. When you see your budget, you will see a carryover of the balance that Nathan referred to from the ADA, and you'll see an addition of 120 in the budget for the project, or if we have a refined number based on the cost estimates. So that's just a broad perspective. Due to the construction going on at the community center this year during the summer, we've made a policy decision, unfortunately, that this will be a fall project after Yountville Days, so that we keep some large function space available to the public. That's a decision that we talked with, but we need to have some spaces, and we didn't feel we were going to be, you know, having two of our largest access areas not available to the public for six to eight weeks during July and August did not seem like an acceptable outcome. So our anticipated construction start date is the day after Yountville Days, with completion shortly thereafter. So I just want, it's not going to be a long-delayed project, because I know the mayor keeps asking me, when will the pea gravel be gone? And he's not the only one, but you all know that that's been a...
It's the messenger.
But this is, that's the game plan, so, you know, you'll see some refinement... But this is, that's the game plan. So, you know, you'll see some refinement, but with your feedback on this, staff is ready to go, and we'll refine the project and the budget.
And you are asking for action on the resolution approving the conceptual plan?
That is correct.
I move we approve Resolution Number 15-3254, approving the Yountville Community Park conceptual plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much for all the coordination and effort. Looking forward to that very much. Going to move on to our next item, considering emergency water conservation regulations.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight I have for your consideration the adoption of resolution to help us establish some emergency water conservation plans and the regulations that are a part of that plan. As we talked about in the last council meeting, the U.S. drought monitor currently classifies almost the entire state of California as experiencing severe to exceptional drought conditions. In most years, California receives about half of its precipitation in the months of December, January, and February, most of that falling as snow in the Sierra Nevadas. As of March 3, 2015, the cumulative precipitation for this region was about 87% of average for the date. However, most of that fell as rain, and the northern Sierra snow water content remained extremely low at 16% average for that date. Similarly, central and southern Sierra Nevada snowpack is at 20 and 21%. So what happened was, most of the rain that we got in December fell as rain. It didn't transition into the Sierra Nevadas as it normally does and fall as snow. It was a pretty warm winter, and as a result, they didn't get the snowpack that they had expected or that we needed. Water levels in almost all of the state's key water supply reservoirs are significantly below average. The state water board in January 23, 2015 issued a notice of surface water shortage and potential for curtailment of water right diversions. This is the fourth year of drought here in California. In 2012, it was categorized as below normal. For the year 2013, it was the driest year in recorded history for many parts of the state. In 2014, it was the third driest year in 119 years of record, and water for this year is on a similar trend with precipitation below average. Snowpack, water content far below average, and many of the reservoirs in the state far below the normal capacity. It's estimated that capacity in October for the key reservoirs will be about 13% of normal capacity, of full capacity. So it's pretty dire straits. January 17, 2014, the governor declared a drought state of emergency. In February 2014, the town council enacted Phase 1 emergency water conservation measures. Those measures that the governor declared during the drought state allowed water, the Water Resources Board to enact certain measures, including in that, included in that was the Water Code Section 105.8.5, which grants the water board the authority to adopt emergency regulations in certain drought years in order to prevent waste, unreasonable use, unreasonable method of use, or unreasonable method of diversion of water to promote water recycling or water conservation. The finding of emergency is not subject to review by the Office of Administrative Law. These measures were adopted, additional measures were adopted by the governor on March 17, 2015. These regulations are in place for at least 270 days unless amended by the board or the governor. The new requirements are grouped into three categories. The measures that affect everyone are, you cannot, you utilize potable water to wash sidewalks and driveways no longer allowed, to wash sidewalks and driveways with potable water. No runoff allowed when irrigating with potable water. You can only use hoses with shut-off nozzles to wash your cars. No potable water in decorative water features that do not recirculate the water, and no outdoor irrigation during and after 48-hour following measurable precipitation. In addition, there are prohibitions for business. They can only serve water to customers on request, and hotels and motels must provide guests with the option to not have towels and let those launder daily. The last group are the water supplies and agencies and what is required of them. So they are not, they need to impose restrictions on outdoor irrigation. This requirement allows for irrigation twice a week. Watering periods when used for irrigation is restricted between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. We must notify our customers about leaks that are within their control. We need to report on water use monthly and report on compliance and enforcement. Our municipal code 13.20 and 13.24 address water conservation and shortage emergencies, and some of the criteria for establishing those regulations. While the governor's drought declaration on March 15 did not declare a Phase 2 or a Phase 3, many of the measures that he asked for implementation were part of the Phase 2 and Phase 3 group of remedies that he had available. State agencies led by the Department of Water Resources will execute a statewide water conservation campaign to make all Californians aware of the drought and mandates for actions to reduce the water usage. It will be built on last year's existing Save Our Water campaign, which asked for a 20% reduction. The mandate actually requires 25, and in some cases, more than 25% reduction, depending on the agency. Agencies with less than 3,000 connections, which is Yountville, are required to reduce usage by 20%. Local urban water suppliers and municipalities are called upon to implement their contingency plans in order to meet the new drought restrictions and requirements, and update their legally required urban and agricultural water management plans. In terms of a water shortage disaster plan, town staff is requesting the town council to approve the attached resolution, which presents the state mandates and requirements for water conservation. And because the town serves less than 3,000 people, we are not mandated to prepare an urban water management plan. However, we are a town that sets a high standard for ourselves and set a good example for others, and as a system of less than 3,000 connections, we may be at some point required to comply with that 20% reduction. So we're recommending that we start that now. On February 4, the council did approve that Phase 1 regulation. So some of these were already included in that Phase 1 compliance, list of items in compliance. In addition to what I have just described, it also restricted, it restricts irrigation of park medians. It's going to limit irrigation to two days a week's maximum. It is also going to require us to notify the leaks about what the customer may have on their property, and we are going to be required to report on compliance and enforcement. So it looks like the state is also going to apply or have in some program for helping with rebate programs, similar to the Cash for Grass and water-saving devices. Since the 1980s, it's been a feature of the state building codes. It looks like it's going to be a more robust program based on what the governor said in his state of the water in that March discussion. The residential clothes washer program is going to continue. High-efficiency toilets program is going to continue. The Cash for Grass program is going to certainly continue. It looks like they're also going to have a program for smart irrigation controllers, something that was talked about last year, and something that looks like this year they actually may find some funding to help with those smart irrigation controllers. So water use efficiency results in benefits to water supply and water quality through technological and behavioral improvements that decrease indoor and outdoor residential, commercial, industrial, and institutional use. The benefits of water use efficiency are often small, incremental, and difficult to see, but when we act together as a community, the cumulative effect is clear, and the benefits are widespread. So as those resources become more available, the state will make those programs more widespread, and it'll become more of a public knowledge campaign. So we're asking you to approve the resolution and give us the tools to be able to help us be able to conserve the water.
Okay, I'm going to start out, because I'm confused by your staff report, Joe.
Okay.
In reading it, and I'm seeing the governor's action of March 17 on page 2 of your report, and then you list three groupings of categories that were being prohibited?
Right.
Okay. So that's a set of things that the state has mandated the public can no longer do.
That's accurate.
Then we go down further, and we talk about on February 4 on the next page, these are what the town implemented on a voluntary basis. So that's over and above what was mandated by the state on March 17?
So that was March 4 of, or I'm sorry, February 4 of last year. The governor declared a drought in January of last year and asked for Phase 1 implementation. That was a voluntary program, and you, as a council, voted to approve that voluntary program. Many of the elements in this program were in that program. However, now they're not voluntary.
It went from voluntary to mandatory?
Correct.
So very similar restrictions, but now mandatory.
Right. And actually, similar, but now even more stringent and much more conservative in terms of what they're asking us to do with water usage and restrictions.
So are there, so you're saying, that was my next question, if I heard you correctly, under the March 17, 2015, virtually everything that was voluntary is now mandatory, and then some?
And then some, including two-day-a-week watering.
Right.
The park median, no longer being able to irrigate park medians. So we're asking for some clarification on the park medians. It is our understanding that park medians are those areas that are out in the center of a roadway that you would see as a normal median in a larger community. We don't have any of those here, but-
So they're not necessarily a landscape, sidewalk landscape median?
At this point, that's not our understanding of what we define as a park median.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, there's one other thing I want to add, that the governor's decree does hold all of the municipal water providers. One of the provisions in the governor's recent order is the agency can be fined. In other words, if the state evaluates what we're doing or not doing, and finds that we're not doing our part, they can impose fines. And so obviously, our effort is to develop a program that will have us in compliance see a reduction in usage and not subject the town to a potential fine or penalty by the state Water Resources Board.
But we're going to continue to be chasing what's happening in Sacramento as it relates to this topic, so that if there's continued sustained drought, they may impose even stricter mandatory regulations that we will then have to respond to again.
Under our municipal code, it's pretty clear that that could be an eventuality. If we went to Phase 2, Phase 3, or Phase 4, then yes, it gets more stringent and stricter. They will look at gallons per day, per person. So they'll have a fixed amount for a household based on how many people are in the household, and it just kind of keeps getting tighter and tighter. And that's kind of a necessity based on the resource.
Okay. And I'm going to set up our town attorney with this one, if you need to think about it for a minute, because I'm hitting you cold with this. The recent discussion about, in some communities, there's a legal challenge to the tiering of rate structure. I don't know if you have any legal opinion on that yet, or if it's still very much an evolving situation. So that if we're putting restrictions in place, and we have a tiered system, that if certain people use X amount of water, they're going to be charged a certain rate, do you see that as being involved in this discussion at all?
The short answer is no. The question of tiered water rates is separate from what staff is bringing before you here. The slightly longer answer is that we are going to be looking at the town's water rates with respect to the recent case that came out yesterday. I think that's what the mayor's referring to.
Right.
The Capistrano Taxpayers Association case. So that may have some impact on the town. We'll be evaluating that with the town manager and staff. But this particular project has more to do with uses of water than how you charge for water. So they're related, but from a legal perspective, pretty distinct.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Dornbecker?
Thank you. So I have a couple of questions, and one is, what have the monthly billings of our ratepayers shown in terms of conservation? At one point, we, I remember you saying that we had cut back by 22%.
We had, and I have bad news, which is recently, the trends have shown an increase in utilization, and we think most of that's attributable to the dry winter, because people normally use less water during this cycle, but they've turned their outdoor irrigation on during the period of January, February, and March, where we normally. So we are, we're still seeing some progress, but it's not, I would say, you know, we're going to have to go back. Now, the good news is there are some people that are being really attentive to it, and I think we're going to see some real education. But I would be misleading you if I said that everything is hunky-dory, because we've got some work to do. The town is setting a good stage with our own property and some of the things that we've done. We have some individual users that haven't, and that's where a lot of our energy is going to go, rather than talking, you know, we're going to have to, we're scalable enough that we can start identifying folks to go have more significant conversations with resources about our programs and tools and work with them. There is one, a couple of things I want to point out in the resolution. Joe alluded to many, but there's a couple of things that are unique to our situation. One is Point 11.
Yeah.
The town shall review and manage our out-of-town customer water contracts and agreements. Many of those have usage limitations that are tied to a residential, and we have a handful of those that are irrigating, we believe, so we're going to be monitoring. So we just, we need to pay more attention to that in traditional. So that's an area that we'll be looking at. Based on council input and feedback from the public a couple meetings ago, you'll note that we've also obligated town staff to hold two educational workshops. We may invite some local landscapers to talk about plant material, but anyway, we heard that from the public, thought that was a great idea. So we're putting it down as a condition on us. You'll see that as Petition 12. You'll also see that we're working on a bilingual door hanger. Our hope is that the homeowners, we have a unique challenge that's somewhat unique to Yountville, but not 100%. We need to get our homeowners to talk to their landscape gardeners, because the vast majority of our property owners are not their own property managers. They have somebody else doing it, and it's critical that they're handing this stuff to whomever is doing that, because many of them don't go out and set their irrigation controller. They don't want to. But so we're really working on, how do we put some purposeful tools out there that will help the homeowner give something to their landscaper? So some of those things will be bilingual English, Spanish, and focusing on that. Following up on some of the comments from last council meeting that we shared with you, again, with increased focus on education. But I think the reality that we're seeing, and what's coming from the governor's office, is we are going to have to show that we're doing purposeful, meaningful efforts to do our part. And now it's going to be, it's going to get a little harder.
Okay. Well, on that subject of education, I want to point out that the Climate Action Plan Committee, or as we call ourselves, the Go Green Team, has also been discussing education about around water issues for the town as part of our outreach. That probably won't take place until later in the year, but we're talking about it. The other question I had is, when you say to people, well, you can only irrigate twice a week, but you don't put any limitation on how long they can irrigate, what does that accomplish?
Well, I think there's two things there, Councilmember Dornbecker. We try to educate people on what is the right amount of irrigation, and most of that is certain types of landscape surface treatments. And that's why there's lots of reference material on staggered sprinkler time, so that you come on, you know, midnight, five to six minutes, go a couple hours, another, depending on the, so there's a lot of education reference. But again, at a certain point, it's usage and monitoring that. So people need to be trimming. We still have people, believe it or not, that are turning their sprinklers on five minutes to 10 minutes a day, every day. Those are, that's where we've really got to get people to stop. The other thing I want to point out is the prohibition on sprinklers, and one other way we get to your usage issue is measuring runoff, because if people see water running off the property, then that's a violation. So if you're overwatering, then you're subject to a penalty or a noticing. This also applies to anybody that may be using well- This also applies to anybody that may be using well water. We have some large properties in town that have typically said, hey, it's not a problem. We're not subject to your rules and regulations, because it's our well water. We're not on your system. And guess what? The prohibition, you'll note that you're adopting, does not say anything about well water exempted. Sprinkler irrigation, runoff, and the two-day-a-week notice, they're subject to any sprinkler irrigation system. So all of those, and we've had some conversations with a handful of those property owners, because, one, we have to get a handle of them, because, trust me, the public is listening. I would say in the last week, we've received over 15 citizen inquiries about, when are you going to go talk to X, Y, Z about their misuse of water? So we're already having those conversations. One other thing, just to make sure we make sure everybody is aware, Condition Number 10 has a limitation. All new projects coming forward, discretionary use permits, et cetera, project remodels will be conditioned on drought tolerant landscaping and drip irrigation. Just want to make, I just don't want anybody to go, they weren't aware of what we were doing, because we have, you know, being a nearly built-out community, we have to put some different steps in place. And this is one of those areas, when somebody comes to significantly remodel their house, we're going to take a look at their landscaping and make sure that they're taking a look at it as well.
I remember when I first moved to Yountville, there was a moratorium on any enlarging of properties or new properties because of water. So that is out there. Thank you.
That was about an eight-year-long moratorium.
Yes, it was.
Vice Mayor, or Councilmember Mueller, your questions next?
So I have some questions. Let's see, since we're on the resolution, Number 5. Number 5 talks about, let me get my microphone out here, watering on, if you're even numbered, Monday and Wednesday, odd-numbered Tuesday, Thursday. So those are 48 hours apart. It's kind of a very short window, and I know you can't water less than that. But it just seems that if Monday and Wednesday were switched to Monday and Thursday, then you've got a 72-hour period, and then 96 hours before you get to the next cycle. And then if Tuesday and Thursday was Tuesday and Friday, it's 72 and 96. So you don't have this big gap of five days.
We use our staff recommendations. Our, the people who maintain the parks and know grass a lot better than I do, and, and we ask them, you know, what would be the best method to try to sustain the lawn based on the two-day-a-week watering, and this is what they suggested. So that's how we came up with that space in between the...
It just seems like some space between those dates.
But is that based on the fact that our parks are used more on the weekends, and so that they wanted to avoid that?
They, they, this, they didn't, they didn't consider that. They just considered what would be the best for the lawn and trying to keep that lawn alive and semi-green, based on the fact that you can only water it two days a week. So that's what they came up with. We, I can definitely ask them about that and, and kind of suggest that we might be able to space it out a little bit different. But we talked about a variety of scenarios, and this was a scenario that they suggested would probably be the best for the health of the lawn.
All right, we can talk about it more, but that, that's one suggestion. I would just space that out a little bit more, unless there's some true reasons instead of just personal opinions. It just seems like, you know, I, I try to space out watering so that it dries out before I start watering again. So it just seemed logical to do that. Also, do we have any information on our, on our gallons per person per day here? Because I was at the California League of Cities, and we had a governor's update and what's coming out very soon, which also brings me to my next question, this 20% reduction that we're talking about, what the governor's going to be suggesting next. There've been a lot of communities, maybe like ours, who have conserved. Maybe we're not doing quite as good a job right this winter, but, and then there are some that haven't. And he's, so they're going to tier it based on gallons per person per day. So for example, in a community that has a very high number, and they've listed what those ranges are, they might make you do 30, they will make you do 35%.
Those numbers came out Friday.
Yeah. And so if they're ultra-conservative, if you've already been conserving a lot, you might only have to do a 10% reduction. So there's a range based on that. So, and then as part of that discussion, if we know where we fall within that, this 20%, 10%, 35%, when's, when's, when's the baseline? When does that start? And where are we going from to?
They're going to take the baseline from 2013.
2013, January, June?
Yeah, I believe it's January of 2013.
Okay.
And we are not in that group of people who were listed for reduction because of the size of our agency.
Greater than 20% reduction?
We're, we're following the 20% guideline, because that's where the governor said users less than 3,000...
People.
Connections would be in that range. So we are, we didn't, the governor published that document on Friday.
Right.
It went from eight to about 36 or 38%. Some of the larger, more ostentatious communities aren't the 38% reduction requirement.
But where do we fit in terms of gallons per person per day? I mean, are we in one of those? If we had more than 3,000 people, we would be asked to do 35%?
Right now, our usage is pretty flat. So we would, we, I would assume that we'd be in that 20% range. Napa is at 28%.
Okay.
Right, right now, we will get some numbers and start reporting some of that, but because of the size of the system, the governor realizes that in, in the State Water Resources Board, that in some cases, the one-size-fits-all approach doesn't work. And small, small systems have different challenges. So right now, we're following the guidelines for a small system. To put it in perspective, they identified a small system as 3,000 ratepayers or accounts. We have 875 in proximity.
I'm, I'm just curious about where we fall. Are we a high user? Are we a low user?
No, we're, we're more, we're probably in the low, medium.
Low, medium, okay.
But we'll get some information to track that in comparison. But we're certainly, we're not in, we don't have the usage rate like the Coachella Valley and some of the Southern California cities. Also, we don't have the usage patterns, and basically because of the size of our properties, you don't have some of the issues of, say, the Newport Beaches and Atherton's in Menlo Park, just because that's not our, our size property and lots. But we'll work on coming up with a, an information reporting, and we'll start sharing that more regularly on where our usage is at on a monthly and do some stuff there.
Okay, so then just to follow up with the Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, if we have to approve this resolution this evening with Monday, Wednesday, you know, only a 48-hour between watering, can we update it later once we get more information? Or are we going to decide that here, or?
I'm going to, before you respond, I have the same question, because the way I've structured mine, it's assuming that the furthest time difference is best.
Right, right.
But what I would like to hear is if our, our professionals know that maybe it's loading up the saturation to get through the next four days is the better way to do it.
Was my suspicion, but I'm not a lawn professional.
Instead of letting it go from watered to completely dry, starting over watering into completely dry, that may not be the best way to sustain the moisture throughout, and that might be where they've come from. But it would seem to be reasonable that if we either want to change that language tonight or leave it as is, and that evidence shows that we need to tweak that, it would not be that hard to tweak that.
We let our arborist go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would think if your interest is in changing it, I would encourage you to change it. I also think we need to realize that our folks may have been focusing on their efforts to maintain turf in large areas. That's not necessarily the case of some of our single-family properties, where they may be looking at. So my suggestion from an education standpoint is if you want to try the Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday, that you put that in there, because I think, once we start educating and getting a messaging out, we'd rather stay with whatever that point is.
So, so let me just ask, though, whether we leave it as is or change it, and tomorrow, Joe goes and talks to somebody who says, this is exactly why we did it this way, what is it going to take for us to change that action?
A resolution, come back to and take another council resolution modifying that.
I just looked up a couple different sites while you were talking. Can I, can I give you some of that information?
Yes, please.
So it says it's best to mimic nature and irrigate deeply and infrequently to simulate natural rainfall. So that's probably what they were thinking, is that it's better to irrigate, not as frequently, but more deeply, so.
That, I don't think is answering the, should it be the furthest time difference apart, or if it's, if it's the intent to try to saturate, almost like, to your point, if there's a storm system that comes in, there's rain for a period of time in a, during a storm window, and then there's not a storm for several days, but that seems to be a little bit difficult to believe. That's the reason for the calculation.
We, we did talk about a variety of things. It was a pretty robust discussion. I'm happy to change it to whatever you guys think will work best. I'm by no means a lawn professional, so I took their advice and take it for what it's worth. I mean, that's, that's kind of where I...
I want to, I want to provide Vice Mayor a chance to ask his questions before we start changing the resolution, but at least two of us have expressed an interest about the language there and, and that item. So we'll get back to that. So, did you have, is that all your questions for now?
I'm done. Thank you, and I'll be relatively brief. So with regards to the programs that are presented in the staff report, you know, I just go back to, how do we get that information out? I mean, I know, having read it and having heard or seen some of these before, you know, let's make sure we're doing whatever we can to communicate with the, the residents. I mean, changing to low-flow toilets, or getting new wash machines, or whatever it's going to take. I mean, that's the kind of stuff that's critical. I think the other question I have with regards to that is, you know, if people go out and they take on one of these projects, or, I don't know, pick something, they, they change their wash machine out, what if the governor comes out and says, well, we'll do a, you know, we'll do a bigger rebate? You know, now these people who've made these investments are obviously helping the water situation, but they're going to miss out on the potential for the bigger rebates. What do we, as a, as a municipality, what's our option, our opportunities?
Well, I think you're dealing in a hypothetical, which is always challenging, but I think if somebody applies for a rebate, gets a rebate, they're done.
Okay.
And if there's a better rebate coming out a year from now, then so be it. We've all bought a car. I think there's a chasing, you know, we try to be flexible right now with our Cash for Grass, if somebody has started it. But I think where the governor is coming out, what you're going to see most is more funding, so that additional funding, because remember, our, who pays the water bill? It's a ratepayer-based utility system. So in many cases, the state is looking at augmenting some funding so that additional money can go into these things, because the water utilities don't necessarily have extra money to aux, so I mean, the first thing I would say is they're going to try to fund things that are currently not being done, or expand the funding to support the program. But a case in point that I will say, Vice Mayor Hall, the new standard, if somebody wants to go out and buy a 1.6-gallon toilet...
1.28.
That no longer meets the requirements. You have to buy a 1.28. So there's little things like that in the terms of the program. And the washers and things like that. We've had a very good conversion rate to date on those. Where I think we're going to see the biggest impact yet is Cash for Grass, getting landscape turf medians, the part, what we call the mow strips between the street, and then smart irrigation controllers, things like that are where we're going to see the best bang for buck with our outdoor irrigation. You know, we need to make those changes. A lot of our homeowners have already, you know, were already well into the second generation of toilets and washers and things like that.
Right. A follow-on question is, you know, and I know we mentioned it here, that we have with out-of-town owners, you know, taking some sort of control or, or doing something that way. But, you know, I hear from neighbors, residents, otherwise, that they're renting, and we know that occurs in this community, and how do you get their landlords to, you know, how do you compel them to comply, when what I hear is that having a rich, vibrant lawn cools down the entire property? I, I, we've got to get some information out there.
Well, I think there's challenges. I'm going to say there's a certain level of responsibility, because, you know, we send out a monthly newsletter with all sorts of inserts with a utility bill. You can't get a whole lot closer to the thing that they've got to pay with all this information about our program. So we'll continue to do that. We'll do, reach out. But for example, you bring up, you know, plant material can help to cool and have positive impact. But that doesn't have to be turf. You can have a lot of perennial selections, ground covers. In fact, many of us in this room have landscapes in our own properties that would be considered water-wise and drought tolerant, that are, that are not unattractive and aren't turf. So I would say there's lots of things there, because the other thing we don't want to necessarily see is everybody just put rock in their front yard and call it good, because that doesn't necessarily have, that's not positive for the climate, the cooling effect that you talk about, nor is it aesthetically pleasing, and it would have some impact on the community aesthetics. So there's a whole balancing on that.
Just a couple other very brief things. Do we know the timing of the door hanger and information kits? I mean, is this going out now, or?
We introduced those to you at the last council meeting, and we've actually did a presentation at the local Kiwanis Club. The staff presented water information education. We've had a handful of people come in and actually request the water conservation, and we've had a couple left with the door hangers. We've had a few of the door hangers delivered. And from an education outreach, every time the first offender, the first offender gets the resource bag with all the information.
Right.
That, that's actually what you all approved February of last year. So that door hanger was part of that package that you all approved as a water efficiency conservation measure as a part of Phase 1.
Right.
So we're just including that with this next round of improvements.
One of our next big focuses is going to be a targeted Cash for Grass, where we'll actually go in and canvass neighborhoods and leave door hangers on those folks that have large green landscapes.
Right. Just one comment, or, you know, as, as was mentioned by others here on the council, you know, I, I've also been reading and keeping up with, you know, the, the different percentages of reduction or conservation that's being requested from both American Canyon and Napa. And I echo their questions, which are, you know, what would we be targeted at if we knew, you know, where we were relative to, or if we were a big city? And we don't need to go into that again, because I think we've already expressed that we'll evaluate that as we look forward. And then lastly, it was also mentioned, and something that we, you know, obviously aren't putting forward in this ordinance, but something that if we were to get to dire straits, which would be a moratorium on any of the new projects that would be coming out, and just obviously consideration of that. And I don't think we're at that point, but...
There's a couple things I need to remind the council. Right now, this resolution, we are adding things at your direction to our Phase 1, because we're not declaring a local Phase 2. We don't have the need or the condition to constitute a Phase 2. Your, your Phase 2, if you go in the details of your ordinance, then we get into more stricter requirements. So what we're attempting to do is be consistent with what the state resource water board and the governor are asking us to do, provide policy direction so we can say, no, this has been approved by the council. So really, what you have is a Phase 1 plus, if I look at it that way, so that we're compliant with what the governor's asking us to do. And then we will continue to monitor the situation, and if the situation changes, we may be back to you in having to change. Certainly, if the drought situation worsens in the next year, I think, you know, we're going to see less and less control on the things that we have. One of the things that came out of the comments that were shared was that not all water supplies are the same. We happen to be in a little better situation than some about our local water supply. It does not mean we have the capacity to waste water, but it also means we don't have the trigger mechanism to require a Phase 2. There are some communities in Napa County that do need to implement Phase 2.
Okay, thank you. The only other thing I wanted to comment on or ask about, actually, is I've been contacted by a couple residents just within the last couple of weeks about the, the curb side, you called them mow strips, the lawn between the sidewalk and the curb in front of a couple different businesses that go off early in the morning. So staff is not on site. You're not seeing it. They're watering maybe at the right time, but they're overwatering excessively to, the sidewalks are wet, the water's running down the street. But by the time public work staff come in, that's not the, that's not the condition. So how are we having people report what they're seeing?
That will be part of, we're receiving some of those, and when we get that...
Are they calling the, the town hall, leaving a message on voicemail? Is that the answer?
They are.
Is that what you're asking?
I will tell you, some, some are emailing.
That's good.
Some are emailing the council, and the council is emailing staff. All of those work.
Okay. Would our member of the public like to comment on this item this evening? If so, she has to come up to the microphone.
It would be my next item, whatever.
All right. Then is there any further discussion about this item? I think we've talked it out pretty thoroughly, but there is a resolution before us. Any further discussion or action?
I'll try and make a motion.
Okay.
And I'll put the, uh...
The one piece that we had to still decide was the item on Number 5, Action Number 5, about the days of the week.
I'll put one in, and we'll see what happens.
Can, can I offer a suggestion on that?
Yes.
Similar to conditional use permits, planning you direct staff to fill in the blanks. So that could either be Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, or if staff finds out the results of the longer expansive time, you direct staff to fill in based on those results, and it'd be a, a blank underline, and you fill in if you're all in agreement to those options.
So if we have two options that we find acceptable, then staff could make the determination as to which one...
If that's within a reasonable time, then I'll... If that's within a reasonable time, then I'll process the resolution with those dates. I don't know if the...
Town attorney's okay with that?
Yeah.
So it won't go effective tonight. I do believe a longer period to dry out, so all the planning stuff says, has got to be better.
But just to be clear, you're asking for what dates? I'm sorry.
Uh, just...
Well, we're about to hear the resolution, if you want to...
Right, so I'll propose that, while I propose that, and if we need to change it back or something. Anyway, approving resolution number 15-3255, establishing water, emergency water conservation regulations, and modifying item G1, G5, that landscaping for even-numbered houses be allowed on Mondays and Thursdays, and addresses ending with an odd number would use Tuesdays and Fridays.
And by the town clerk's suggestion, are you willing to add, if staff determines a specific reason for Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Monday, Wednesday, or Tuesday, Thursday, that's an acceptable change?
Well, I'd like to look at those compelling reasons, just to see where they came from.
Which means it'll take at least two weeks for us to revisit this.
Then it would need to come back, if you want to see those.
Yeah. If you want to exercise the discretion, then have it come back for an amendment. If you are delegating to staff the discretion to set what two days are allowed, then, then that would be the option that the clerk was recommending. That would be a true delegation, though.
Well, I'll try it as is, and we'll see if we get a second and where it goes, and then we'll go from there, is my thought.
Well, I'm going to go ahead and make a substitute motion.
Okay.
Because I'm going to propose the resolution as presented with the change to item five to give administrative authority to determine the irrigation schedule of either Monday and Thursday for even-numbered addresses, and Tuesday, Friday for odd-numbered addresses, or Monday, Wednesday for even, and Tuesday, Thursday for odd. Is that clear enough to...
I don't know, maybe you could also include that, understanding that council prefers that first option unless there's some technical reason why something else needs to be suggested. And that's another idea.
I will assume that, the way I've stated it, I've given you the first one as the priority, which is the priority for my motion, my substitute motion.
Yep.
So with that substitute motion, is there a second to that substitute motion?
I'll second.
Or is there another substitute motion? All right. There's a second on the substitute motion. Any discussion about that? Do you know, is there, all in favor of the substitute motion?
That's fine.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the substitute motion passes, and we throw out the initial motion, which is almost exactly the same as the substitute motion. I think it's a good point. We just need to see if there's a compelling reason for one or the other. Okay, I think we covered that one. We're going to move on to item 9C, discussion and possible direction regarding vacant storefront ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We have an item before you this evening as a discussion item for you to consider. Oopsie, okay. That's fine. It's only the title. It doesn't matter. So we just have a discussion item about whether or not the council would like us to entertain coming back to you with some guidelines regarding vacant storefront and the treatment of those. So we're not taking any action this evening. We're asking you if this is something you would like staff to pursue, and maybe any changes that you've identified in looking at the drafts that we provided, as well as some points that we might be interested in getting some feedback directly from you. Yountville is a beautiful place, and it's a very unique community with a very small downtown, mostly very, very vibrant retail areas. We have several properties in town where, for many different reasons, the owners of those properties have elected not to really market those in a way that they are getting less sees into those spaces. And some of them have been vacant for many years, some as much as five years. I think because we're near buildout, and the other, the other issue in terms of valuing the agricultural areas that surround Yountville that kind of limit our ability to grow, leads us to really be focusing on those places that are not being rented, because there are many problems that are as a result of those not being rented. We've received a lot of complaints from the community wondering why those spaces continue to be vacant. They adversely affect the businesses that surround them by remaining vacant. They're not rented then to local entrepreneurs that would have an opportunity to develop a business, and they adversely affect employment opportunities for a lot of our Yountville residents. So there are certainly a number of reasons why it's in our best interest to see that all of these spaces are rented.
Keep going.
It's okay. Sorry. It's not that important. I just had a few pictures of what we have currently in town, and then what some of the suggestions are. So, you know, not, one of the, the last, and probably one of the most important reasons is when those spaces aren't vacant, are vacant, then they're not generating tax revenue for the rest of the community that can help support services here in the town. So for all of those reasons, it's, it's, it's an idea that I think you should consider. The draft ordinance that we have before you this evening is an attempt to improve appearances of those spaces, but also to encouraging property owners to get them filled. The current draft of the ordinance requires that ground-floor windows be aesthetically pleasing from the sidewalk or the street when the space is vacant longer than 90 days. So during the time when, say, Cornerstone is closed, because they've moved in the back and we're waiting for the next tenant to come in, those buildings are not subject to this. It would be when they're vacant for longer than 90 days. So, you know, in terms of the cost, the owners wouldn't be having to do anything in those cases. We're, in the, in the proposed ordinance, it is for windows that are visible from the street or the sidewalk. One of the things that you may want to consider is whether you want to have courtyards where the space is vacant also be subject to these ordinance, these guidelines as well. That's something for you to consider this evening. The proposed ordinance allows these owners quite a bit of creativity in how they would make the spaces more aesthetically pleasing. The current ordinance allows there to be, there we go. Is that going to work?
Nope.
Okay.
We're out of luck.
Well, that's okay. I can show you my pictures here, my hard copies.
I'll go and see if I can print it, and then I'll go copy it.
Okay. That's okay. There are four different options for how the windows can be treated. One of them would be for faux window dressing. In other words, that there would be a backdrop and perhaps a table with a setting of, of a table, a dining table, or some other sort of faux window dressing. Works of art could be displayed in the vacant storefronts. The windows could be painted with paintings or other, other works of art. And then kind of a catch-all, which would be other options that we may not have considered, but could be things associated with community events that were coming in the future, that sort of thing. The draft requires that the display window be covered at least 80%, 80 to 100% of the windows, so they, they would not be able just to put something small in the window and then leave, leave everything else vacant. And in terms of, one of the other things that we're asking the council for some input, in most of, we've suggested some fee structure in here about how this might work. Currently, all of the building and planning fees are deposit-based, so we could continue that process as a deposit-based fee for processing the initial applications, and then for a monthly review to make sure that the windows are still pleasing, that they haven't been somehow damaged, and that we continue to monitor that the, that the spaces are filled. So again, we, we've provided you with, I think, a lot of background. I'm sorry that you don't have the pictures, but we'll, we'll have them in a few minutes.
Well, we have, what you have in your hand, we have in our...
I have these in my hand. These are...
We have, we have the other document in our packet.
You have this one.
Yes.
These are not, these are the Yountville examples, in any event. So these are just two of them that were actually in the PowerPoint.
Yeah, we know all about this.
You know, you probably know, because you see them every day. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, or we can have a discussion about whether you'd like to move forward with this.
Okay, questions? Councilor Moller.
So, at the north end of Yountville, there's a business that has a lot of empty spaces. So you potentially would count up all the windows that fit within these parameters, and there could be 10. So if we approve a fee like $1,500, it'd be $1,500 times 10 just for the initial vacant building. Is that correct?
Well, the fee is actually based on the empty suites, so...
So what's a suite?
A suite would be anything that's open on the inside, that had two windows or three, however many is open. Some, I know in that space you mean, I don't think there's any dividing walls inside. So in essence, you know, one of my other suggestions was maybe we do it on a, on a deposit basis. Then those might take more work from staff, because they'd be processing more windows and looking at more plans for those sorts of things. So doing it on a deposit basis would allow full-cost recovery for that sort of thing. Now, the way the ordinance is currently written, the only windows that this really would apply to would be the ones on Madison, not the ones that are in the courtyard, or the ones that face the parking lot in that complex. So that's, again, something to discuss this evening as to whether or not you would allow those to be, continue to have paper in them, or be open, and then just be treating the ones that are in Madison. So that's some of the options.
So if our real true intent by imposing these fees or fines, or whatever you want to, you can call them a lot of things, taxes, I don't care, is really to, you know, get their attention, that we'd like some of these things rented, we could do more than just a suite, defined as any space with four walls. That's...
In other words, you know, you could apply this to each individual window, or something like that? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, I don't really know yet, but now that I know that, you know, one whole big giant complex is all one big room...
Actually, it's not. I think that Marlene needs to clarify that, because the area you're talking about, it doesn't, it's not the parcel. It is designed around what I would call a suite, so that, you know, in the case that you're talking about, while I don't think 10's accurate, the retail space in that location, there's more than one, probably less than six. So the idea would be where you use doorways, and we can work on, if that's your interest, staff will work on tightening that up, because that's where I think Marlene brought up, you know, if you go in, we know how those areas, for example, one of those buildings had two or three different spaces, so we can use doorways as an entry point. The real question for us is, don't get overly focused on the details, but tell us some of the thoughts that you like, because we're hearing from you. It sounds like there's some interest in it being all vacant storefronts, not just those from a public street, but we need to confirm that from the whole council, and maybe we want to make sure that, you know, some of the spaces are really identifiable, but it would, sounds to me like the council's interested in, if there's a large mixture shopping center, we don't want that treated as one space. We want it broken down into the rentable spaces. If that's a broad characterization of the council's interests.
Additional questions?
Nope.
Councilor Dornbecker?
How many vacant spaces are there in total in town?
There are, well, if you're, if you're using the definition that we have in the ordinance, there's probably three, four, are we around eight? Eight to 10, I would say.
That front on the, the street?
No, that would, that are vacant, that potentially you could be looking at, but that, in terms of the suite orientation, with the doorway being defined as, as, as a specific or a different space. So I would say eight to 10, if you were counting everything. If it was front-facing, I would say it would probably be, be, um, five, five or six.
I can't identify where they are. I only know of two.
Well, this helps identify some of them right here in the packet you were just handing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We, we have several, several storefronts in the Hillstone Square. We have Edward James Courtyard, the former Razz Galleries is another one. We have the secondary building at Priest Ranch is another one. If you break down the Hillstone Square, that's at least half a dozen, depending on definition.
Right. I think six under the definition is what I would call that, that space.
And then there, that probably has no bearing on this, vacancies in V Marketplace. They don't have an external impact.
Right.
But they are still vacancies of space. So if you're inside that area, and you're walking by a vacant storefront, it's the same impact.
And I also want to clarify, just so that everybody's aware, we have a 90-day trigger. So the intent is, we're not going to be knocking on the door the first day. 90 days is more than adequate time in most cases for, based on the knowledge and demand, for when a tenant comes up, for the landlord to be aggressively marketing and moving forward. So, you know, if somebody's coming forward, they secure permits to do renovations, or move forward, or start an application for conditional use permit with the town if they're making some other change, then that won't trigger this. It's really when we have somebody sitting fallow, and as most of you know, most of the spaces we're talking about, they've sat vacant for an extended period of time with very little activity or any part. And that's what we're trying to let the property owners know, that that's not acceptable to the community.
And how many businesses have, have actually applied to those, to be, to rent those spaces? Do you know?
We've had a couple of inquiries. I know in the time that I've been here, some of them don't meet necessarily the requirements of that retail district, and so those have not gone forward. You know, obviously, the Creamery Project in Edward James Courtyard is, you know, we're starting to look at plans for that one, so that one seems to finally be moving ahead a little bit faster than we, you know, anticipated a couple months ago. So, you know, they would probably be in for building permits before too long, and then they wouldn't, they wouldn't be subject to this once they've applied for a building permit. So, yeah. Not a whole lot of inquiries on those spots, but we've, we have had a couple of entrepreneurs that have come in and, and said they would really like to have some space to rent, but they can't find anything, or the, or the landlord is saying the price is extremely high, and they can't afford it. So not, not necessarily having identified a space, but just looking for some spot, some spot. So we directed them to the ones that are vacant, and then they say, yes, we've already talked to them, and it's beyond our means, or it's not quite right. So.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I mean, I, in general, I think it makes sense. It compels someone to do something to beautify, if you will, the community, rather than leaving it as a vacant storefront. You know, I would tend to want to include the courtyard, I mean, from an evaluative standpoint, because it is, if it's, if it's empty in the middle, you know, and someone walks in and sees that, that gives the same sort of impression, they're just not driving by, which is what most people will see in this regard. I would also say, to carry on one of the comments that was made, you know, the new marketplace shouldn't be exempt from that particular aspect, I would assume, although I don't know what power the town might have over a vacant unit inside of it. But, I mean, again, it gives the same impression to people that are inside the parcel. What I don't understand, and, I mean, I work in a business where, you know, there's lots of opportunities to go out and evaluate what, what new businesses might look like. We don't do anything but sell wine out of the winery. The reality is, you know, I can't imagine that an entrepreneur wouldn't want to come to this town, as we have maintained its infrastructure, and/or that a landlord would not want to find an opportunity to generate additional income for a vacant parcel. It's, it's beyond me. But that said, I would support it if it, at the very least, compelled someone to act, and/or if it did something to beautify the, the community as such. But I guess we'd have to see a real ordinance. I would suggest that we at least continue to pursue it, and perhaps the town adopts that, or, you know, we modify or do whatever. But yeah, I would, I would support at least evaluating it.
So questions I have, to make sure I understand where the teeth are in this proposed ordinance. Anybody that has, whatever we define as a vacant storefront, and that's still to be debated, street-facing, courtyard, parking lot, whatever, and the parameters of their windows, $1,500, either straight up, they pay it, or it's a deposit until they, they rent the space, and then $150 a month, every month after 90 days.
It would be, yes, that would be a monitoring fee. We would send staff out and make sure that the window's still being maintained. We would send staff out and make sure that the window's still being maintained and that sort of thing. Again, like I'm suggesting that, you know, you can, you could establish a fee based on cost recovery or we could work on a deposit in terms of processing the applications. That would be, you know, another option.
We got to $1,500 and $150, how?
That was based on just some estimates of how much time we thought it would take to process an application and, you know, meet with the, with the property owners and go over the materials and look at plans and, you know, that sort of thing.
So I guess I'm not understanding, so we know where these vacant stores are and we don't need to do any more research. We know they're empty. They have been for years.
Correct.
So in 90 days from the action on this item, we would then go say, you owe us $1,500 per unit, whatever we decide the unit is, for your vacancies.
They would be applying with whatever window treatment they wanted to put into the, the window. That's, that's really what they're doing. They would have to act in accordance with this ordinance and suggest what they wanted to do to, to comply with it, which would be to put in paintings and some sort of backdrops or, or materials, that sort of thing. And that, as part of that, we would be reviewing plans, we'd be processing a permit for that.
But we're not, the end result is to try to get these places leased, correct?
Well, I mean, that's, yes, that's definitely a benefit. The, you know, the, the focus of this ordinance is on making the, the spaces more aesthetically pleasing. But I think that implementing this kind of a program where someone's going to have to invest maybe several thousand dollars into materials and, you know, putting together plans and that sort of thing may get them to the position where they decide, hmm, maybe I'll rent it instead. And I think that's just a side benefit of the ordinance.
You asked a good question, Mayor, and the enforcement. I think you're correct that this is an encouragement to spur activity when it hasn't and then it's designed to at least create a greater impression, a more positive impression.
Okay, so do you have any idea if this has worked in downtown Napa?
It is not a Napa model. This is, there's very few examples that are-
Was art put in those storefronts to mask vacancies? So you're saying that there was no-
That was done informally. It wasn't a formal program that was imposed on the property.
But did it have the reverse effect of disincentivizing somebody to do anything in that empty space? Because now they just said, well, I'm not part of the blight on the block anymore because I've got a piece of art in front of my window.
You, I think you have to look at, you know, our current situation is not like many communities. We have landlords for a variety of reasons that have space that have had opportunities to rent them. The, the dynamics in downtown Napa were not the same because some of those properties were on hold pending redevelopment.
I don't mean to draw that greater comparison, but is the goal of this thing to get these places leased? Or are we just trying to beautify empty office or empty retail spaces?
And I think it's not, I mean, we don't have the ability to make somebody go out and lease them. So what we're attempting to do is encourage that. And this is a tool that we've came up with in conversations, talking with some other communities. Uh, this one is actually modeled after the City of Gilroy. We had some conversations with them. We don't find too many that have our situation. The challenge in our community is, we know that there are people that have inquired about renting the space. The landlord has simply said, no, I'm not interested. So we're, we're struggling. I don't know that this is the end-all, be-all. It does not have the penalty that you're looking for because it's an inducement, encouragement. We'll continue to research what we might be able to do, but we don't have a tool. Maybe the attorney will be able to help us, but we don't have right now somebody that says, if you don't rent your space out, X, Y. So this is a step in that direction, but it is not by any sense 100%.
Okay, yeah, no, I get you. Now, to, a question for the town attorney. Can these, the $1,500, the $150, can we legally support these numbers? Or can somebody say, that's arbitrary and it's punitive and it's illegal to require me to pay $1,500?
The, these fees will be like any other fees that the town imposes. So to the extent you're charging a fee for enforcement of a regulatory scheme, inspections, processing of applications, that's going to be limited to the cost to provide that review or inspection and staff has indicated that they've calculated the fee accordingly.
They were based on.
But you also can fine individuals and businesses for violating your code. So there are different ways you can charge money to a business owner, either under this ordinance or any other. One would be the, the fees associated with regulation and the other is fines for violations. So you can do both. Certainly they are subject to challenge, but we would prepare the documentation prior to adoption of the ordinance to justify them.
So we couldn't put in place a, a trigger of time that if it's $1,500 in staff time and review and all that that you described that can validate the charge of $1,500, we can't say after one year, you're now going to be charged something other than the $150 a month because that becomes arbitrary?
Well, you could require that they renew the permit.
Back to the original $1,500.
And, I mean, go back through the process again and maybe at that point, you know, we've, we've decided that things need to be changed up. A different window isn't put in place. We don't want the same thing for the next five years looking exactly the same. That would be my opinion. And so having them reapply each year and provide a new, a new display, I think would make sense. So sending them back through the process again, I think would be smart. The other thing that I'm enjoying working with Michael on is he has, he, we're really looking at how our, our citation procedures and policies and fines are put together. So if someone, if we pass this ordinance and someone doesn't come in and do what they, what they're supposed to, to do in terms of turning in a permit, there are, there are other remedies because they're not following your ordinances and, you know, so.
I, I get that part. I think that totally makes sense. And I'm encouraged by the fact that it might be possible for us to renew this after an extended period of time because ultimately, I think we're really trying to avoid vacant storefronts. And we have one in particular, it's, as you said, five years now. It might be considered no big deal to pay $1,500 and then, you know, a monthly fee. They'll just write that off and still not be encouraged to do anything with the property. But we may have legal restrictions on what we can, we can't, as the town manager said, we can't force them to rent it, but we can make it more uncomfortable to keep it vacant.
And I think you can fairly require that they improve the aesthetics of your town based on the commercial choice that they're making. So that if they are making a choice not to lease the property, I think it's fair to, to ask that they mitigate the aesthetic impact that that has.
And we've done that with vacant lots, with requirement to either cut the weeds down or put some kind of landscape screening up so that we're not staring at a vacant lot for a number of years. Same general idea.
This is more aggressive, but if the council would like to see the permits be done on a six-month cycle so the window displays stay very fresh and current, we can do that process as well. Because again, you know, there's opportunities. We're trying to get a little bit of a pulse. We put something together, you're giving us some good feedback and we'll go in. We definitely, I think, are sensing that there is a frustration on the part of the council as it is on staff and the community. That, you know, and that's why I'm saying, this doesn't go as far as I know some of you would like, but it's a step. And I think it does show that the community's doing something.
Well, and I'm being a little more animated than maybe some of my, my fellow council members, but I also don't want to get so punitive that we're, we're trying to rotate an aesthetic where every other storefront that is occupied doesn't have to do that. That might go a little bit too far the other way, but I get what you're, you're saying. Okay, Councilor Dornbecker, did you have something else to add?
Hey, Councilor Markery. Well, I'm sorry, but I really feel that there are so few of them in our town and it is so punitive that I would much rather see the planning department go out and cheerlead and work with them and try and get them to see that they are doing that before we put yet more legislation on the backs of everybody in this town. And I just feel that it's, you know, there's one place that's been, you know, and you can hardly call it a horrible place. It's a very beautiful place, except for that one building that's not open. And it's frustrating that it isn't open, but I feel that this is really an over, governmental overreach personally. That's how I feel. But I thought we weren't going to discuss this until we had public-
That's exactly what I was about to say. I was, I was asking if you had additional questions of staff. So I will invite our member of the public who has already identified an interest in speaking on this item to do so now. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. My name is Alyssa Wickstrom, for the record. Do you need me to spell it, Michelle?
No.
So, you know, just generally speaking, you know, I am a member of the Chamber of Commerce and a board member and so I thought that somebody from the business community should probably be here when you guys were discussing it. Not that I'm speaking on behalf of the chamber, but just, they elected me, so I thought I should show up and voice some sort of interest and concern. Knowing that this obviously isn't coming to you as a first reading, I get that, you know, all of the definitions, you know, aren't there and defined terms are inconsistent and all of that, you know, I get that all of that will come through and fix the typos. I, I do think that this waffles a bit. The stated purpose really seems to be embracing both the blight element and the tax revenue loss and just general, you know, loss of business diversity, which I, I think is a particularly acute issue for us, right? We have so little space and so many tasting rooms in hotels. It would be really nice if there were just more shops for people to go into. I used to buy my dog food at the pet store right below my office that was, you know, on the north end of town. And I used to go into that toy store and buy toys for my little sisters and cousins. So, you know, it was sad when, when those businesses lost their lease. It was. And when you play bocce with people who own those stores, right, and you see their faces and talk to them, that's what makes our community really special, is that we do have a connection between the people who own the stores and lease the space and live here. And I think when you have large companies that are thousands of miles away who don't have to play bocce with those people, that they're kicking out of their space, it's a lot easier to just kick them out and leave the space open. And so, I don't know, I, I feel like somebody should speak up for that, right? And say, there's a real human cost associated with that and it affects our community in a very, um, not just pecuniary way, it really does. So I, I think that the stated purpose in the ordinance sort of waffles between a whimsy of that and also a loss of tax revenue. And then the stick, although it'd be very, very small, in my opinion, it is sort of, it doesn't really address the loss of tax revenue in a way that I would hope maybe we could, right? If that's a stated purpose of the ordinance, then there should be some tie in the end to, to what we're getting out of the fee or penalty or whatever, right? Like, I'm not sure if that's legal. I'm just saying that if you're going to say that that's one of the reasons that you do it, it seems like the, the punishment basically should fit the crime, right? Like, there should be some congruity there. So that's something that would interest me. I, I would really think it would be nice if we could add some element of this, if the council does decide to go forward with it, of people being able to mitigate maybe their fee by demonstrating an ongoing effort to attempt to rent the space. So, you know, not all spaces are easy to rent. We have all seen every single week, Jan has been advertising for a unique retail space in the V Marketplace for rent. It's been there for as long as I've lived in this town, I think, every single week it's in there. So I don't know if there's actually a space or if Jan just keeps that ad in there, but-
Talk to me about that.
But-
It's a marketing ploy more than it is a-
Anyway, anyway.
Got it, okay.
More than it is a space need.
Okay, so, you know, Steve, you're always so distracting. What was I going to say? Ah, the, the space. Just that, I, I think that some spaces may be easier to lease than others and I think that we shouldn't punish, you know, maybe a smaller property owner that has maybe two units and they are actively trying to find a credit-worthy, you know, acceptable tenant for the space as opposed to another tenant who ha, or another landowner who has an entire building that it seems pretty clear they're just wanting to mow it down and put parking in so that the restaurant, you know, has enough parking maybe? Or if they have some grander intent that has nothing to do with retail diversity or they just don't care because they don't, they're not losing any money by keeping it open and they're not affected by the fact that it looks ugly and I can't buy pet food for my dog, you know, on my way home from work as easily anymore. And so it would be nice if we built in something so that people could demonstrate that they're making an effort and then, and then they wouldn't maybe be punished with quite that same level. So those are my thoughts. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other members of the public, we can now get back to our, our kind of discussion piece. If you had additional thoughts, Councilor Dornbecker?
Well, if there were a way that landlords or business owners who could really demonstrate that they are, you know, reaching out and trying to rent the space, then I think that, you know, and it's not that it's such a, a large amount of money, but I don't know. I just, we, we're almost built out. We're almost, you know, putting in more and more ordinances at this point, it seems sort of-
I guess I-
The, the horse has already left the barn, excuse me. Thank you.
Okay.
I think, Councilmember Dornbecker, staff's not lost on that. The only thing I want to share with you is, we've spent now over three years trying to work with the property owners or more to get a result and we haven't seen a result. And, and we hear regularly from council, people that want to be in the business community. And on the surface, eight storefronts vacant may seem like a small amount, but there are a couple of compounding factors for Yountville. One, we have very finite rentable retail space.
I know those-
And the challenge for us is, we know there are people that have attempted to rent the space and it's an odd, it's an odd, unique market characteristic. And again, staff will not be offended if you tell us, no, this concept does not make sense. That's why we're here having a concept discussion. We're here though because we've come up with something because in past, you've asked us to try to come up with something and we don't, we don't have an answer on this because I know it doesn't go far enough for some of you. It, I know, we would prefer not to have to use this mechanism or tool. We would really like most folks to be turning over the space, you know, if they come with us to show that they're leasing. Our set of challenges is that we know that in this particular case, with all three properties, that has not been the case.
Yeah, Councilwoman Moller, your thoughts?
I'm definitely in favor of this. I think we need to do something. We, we have to react. Things change over time. We have Airbnb now, we haven't really dealt with that. We've got pods popping up all over and the residences, you know. These are new ordinance we have to put in place because new things happen out in the world and I think we have to be able to react to them. And this is a, a very unique new trend, even though some of them are going on for Yountville. And I think it'd be very wise of us to do that. I'm not really, I think the staff's going to have to be pretty creative here. I am okay with some type of a small opt-out provision. It might just be, you know, giving the town manager some discretion because there could be some extenuating circumstances, but, and I'm okay with that. But in general, I'm, I'm certainly not okay with somebody coming to town and thinking, no, they'll just, you know, buy this up for a while and sit on it. That's not who we are and that's why we manage it and we get, we try to maintain the, um, the culture and who we are as, as Yountville. And we manage this pretty tightly and I think this is just another tight way to, to manage that. And I think it's very smart that we do this. I mean, we're not, in my mind, putting negative restrictions on business. I mean, we're telling them to rent your business and to make more money. We're not trying to make it onerous to, to not go that way. So I see it as a, a positive way. And we're going to eventually, any, if they rent anybody, we're going to approve all the use permits so we're going to have control over that in case, you know, tattoo parlors want to come into town and they want to, or just to rent them out, they're going to show us. I mean, so we will have control over that as well. So I think that this is just kind of a new issue based on the times that we have to deal with. So I'm in support of it. $1,500, if we can justify that, seems like a minimum to me. So if the numbers are higher, full cost recovery would be my message there. And we didn't really get into all the, I, I think if you can, as many businesses that are truly in a space, that's, I would go that direction just- as many businesses that are truly in a space, that's, I would go that direction just rather than storefronts, because it is about blight. And I do know that if local people come to town and they rent businesses, it's far more valuable to a community for those types of businesses than the big-box businesses. It's been shown over and over that they're, they add so much more value and so much more money to a town than the bigger ones do. So, that's enough of my soapbox.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, and I want to echo those sentiments, Councilmember Muller. You know, it really is an opportunity for us to at least have some additional compelling means to get someone to, you know, get moving on vacant space. And we know, in this room, we all know kind of who we're talking about. They're not inconsistent. They, it's been happening for periods here. But, you know, I also want us to be mindful of the fact that if we weren't in an economic updraft, so to speak, and we were in an economic downdraft, and it was difficult to rent these spaces, that we do have to have a little bit more latitude. I mean, it'd be very difficult if landlords were trying to rent at their cost and no one was willing to rent them, because the economy wasn't so great. So, we do need to be aware of that. I mean, it's one thing that we're in a very positive economic environment, especially in this community, which we can all be very proud of. I think we've worked very hard at that. But we don't want to also assume that that will go on forever. It will, but we don't want to assume that. That said, the other piece I would want to just to make sure was at least considered was the dollar amount. You know, I'm sure that can be determined based on whatever work you guys are doing, and/or something that would be somewhat punitive, you know, make it work, let's get it fixed. But I would also support having it be something that is done on a more frequent basis. Six months seems reasonable to me. I'm sure you can come up with something that's consistent. Quarterly seems maybe a little assertive, but, boy, it may get people to act if they had to do it more frequently and figure out what window treatments they were going to include. But that would be my direction. Again, I think it, I think it does make sense. You know, let's get these places rented, and as was presented already, let's get the economic, you know, the economic opportunities created.
Thank you. One thing I want to just mention about this, we can't forget, not, not all our conditions are based on large, out-of-town corporate property owners. We have, we have some local property owners that are guilty of this as well. And so, it's not just about, you know, supporting local business over an outside influence that's doing it. Also, one thing we would need to do if we move forward on this, and I think, I think it's worth pursuing an ordinance, I agree that we should probably have some stipulation in here, language that says if you're actively trying to rent your space and you can't do it, and maybe that's just showing the town staff evidence that there is an effort, that that's not going to trigger the 90 days. I get that it might be difficult to rent a particular space, and that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about somebody who's intentionally leaving their retail space vacant. Maybe they're turning it into storage for another secondary business or a primary business, which is something else that I was concerned with. If we allow them to cover up the windows entirely, there does need to be the periodic monitoring, just to make sure that we haven't created a whole new storage unit for our business. And it, again, disincentivizes them to move forward with leasing that space. You know, I think we've seen in your presentation that there are some really aesthetically attractive ways to handle this situation, and there's some other ways that, you know, they're embarrassing. And I'm surprised the property owners are willing to let their own, you know, properties look this unkept and unprofessional. But it's been proven to us that they're willing to do that. And so, I'm not willing to tolerate that unprofessional condition if we have ways that we can legally do that, to end that, or at least to make it more painful to ignore the intent of our retail spaces. So, if the, you know, I thought $1,500 for a registration fee was modest, if not undervalued, but if we need to be legally accountable to the cost that we're trying to recover, I worry that it's not punitive enough, but I'm willing to accept that we take a step toward remedying the situations and not need to carry a heavier stick than might be necessary to motivate. So, certainly, cost recovery would be a bare minimum, and then if we have legal options to add more punitive fees to that...
I do want to echo what the town attorney mentioned, which is, in this particular case, the, you know, each daily violation of not being in compliance with this requirement is a violation of the municipal code punishable up to $1,000 a day. So, ultimately, if somebody just completely blatantly disregards this requirement, that's your enforcement tool.
But that's not the same thing that what I'm talking about, Steve, is we can't legally force them to lease the space.
That's correct.
And our ultimate goal is to lease the space and to have the retail diversity. The irony is, we can hold back on an occupational, you know, permit to start, but once they've started the business, they can let it go, you know, unfinished for an indefinite period of time, and we have no recourse.
And I also, you know, just in clarification, you know, you guys have approved an earlier ordinance that allows certain uses by right. So, in some cases, some of these properties, if they brought us something that is consistent with that approval, that can get approved over the counter at the staff level. It doesn't even need to come back to council unless it includes food or alcohol, or a few other things that you put on that. But, you know, you actually gave us the tool to encourage economic, you know, utilization and to make that process easier.
Well, I think, I think we've given enough direction that at least the majority of the council agrees that we want to pursue this as a potential ordinance. So, I think there's plenty of language to be crafted going forward. But if you feel like you've been given sufficient instruction on our intents, then I think we can move forward.
I think we've got some good understanding.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. And I see that we got the TV monitor going.
Great.
So, should we start over?
Yeah, no.
We're going to move on next to discussion and possible action on municipal code amendment requiring development project notification signage.
Sorry, all the boring ones are at the end of the meeting tonight. So, as the town council's aware, you have, I think, a very unique community that, one of the things that I notice coming from somewhere else is watching how well you do things. And one of the things that I'm extremely impressed in the last four months that I've seen is the attempts that both the council and the staff make for community engagement and making sure that people know what's happening in Yountville. And you're, you're lucky to have a community this size, because those things are a little easier to do, but they're also very important. And so, with that in mind, one of the things that you don't do, that most other communities do do, is when, when development projects are proposed for a specific site, most communities have a public notice system, so that the property is, actually has to put a notice up that something is planned to be considered on a discretionary basis. And I can give you an example that's happened since I was here, where we had an item before the ZDRB, and a woman came in two weeks after it'd been approved. So, the appeal period had come, and she was, you know, asking, "I didn't get the notice until after I left on vacation." And I explained to her what our process was. We, right now, we do 10-day notices, such that all property owners that are within a certain radius are notified of a project that is coming before a discretionary body. We send those to the address that's included in the assessor's records. Sometimes those addresses are a bookkeeper that pays the property tax bill, or a trustee that is a trustee of a trust and doesn't live here. We make an attempt to try to notice, if we, if we, if we see that kind of a situation, we, as a staff level, actually will send another notice to resident of that address in case we know that it's an out-of-town owner and a renter needs to know about these things. But some of these things are difficult to catch, and she just happened to fall into that little, little, little gap where she didn't receive a notice. It was interesting, because I talked to her for quite a bit of time, and I told her, "This is one thing that we are bringing before the council." And she said, "I would be 100% in favor of it, and I asked her to come to the meeting tonight, but she's not here." She said, "I'm a walker. If I, if that sign had been up, I would have seen it." And so, in any event, in kind of keeping with the town's desire to really have people more involved and know what's going on and not have things kind of pop up at the last minute, this is something that we're, you know, again, we're discussing it this evening. It's not proposed for action this evening, but would require a project notification actually posted on a site. And the size of the postings are kind of included in an attachment that's included in the staff report. There are, you know, a list of major projects that have to put a fairly large sign up, and then minor projects that actually put just more or less just a small, you know, plastic-covered notice on a stick at the house. And so, the categories that we have for those major projects are subdivisions of five or more lots. And then architectural and site applications involve construction of new buildings on the property. And after, you know, looking at this, and then, you know, you put it on the agenda, and then I started thinking about this again, and one of the things that you may want to think about is whether or not you'd want to call a resident, a new residential building, maybe a minor project, because, and just restrict this architectural and site applications involving construction of new buildings in commercial areas, and then move the residential one to the minor one, because I'm not sure we really want to see a four-by-eight sign on a vacant lot in front of, you know, in a neighborhood, because that would be a kind of overkill, in my mind. And then zoning and text and map amendments that are site-specific, and general plan amendments, site-specific is as well. And then minor projects, which would do the smaller notices, would be subdivisions of four or less lots, architectural and site applications that do not involve construction of new buildings. So, in other words, just a remodel or adding a second unit or something like that, or, you know, just a minor tenant improvement or a new patio or something on a, on a commercial business instead of a brand-new, brand-new one. And conditional use permits and variances. Those are kind of the brackets that we have looked. We did some research on a lot of different communities, and this tends to be the sizes that they require. And so, we put that before you this evening to consider whether or not you'd like us to work on this. And in terms of the timelines, this current version requires that it go up at the same day as a 10-day notice. You could increase that to, you know, to a longer period of time, so it would be up a little bit earlier than just when the person got a 10-day notice, because they would kind of almost go out simultaneously. And then this requires that the sign be removed as soon as the appeal period has passed for discretionary review, or the town council's action, has acted on an application, so that they're required to be up in time for the, for them to be noticed by the neighbors and then removed immediately after, so that there's no, you know, additional signage that's cluttering the neighborhood. So, with that, we'd be happy to hear from you what you, what you think about this, if you think this is a good idea, and maybe some changes that you've, that you've identified.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dornbecker, do you have any questions about the presentation?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Muller?
I have no questions, but a lot of comments.
Hold those, please.
Okay.
Vice Mayor.
I do have a question, or maybe two. So, I think what I heard you say is that, you know, if it was something that was more commercial or larger in nature, you know, that what's being at least proposed or recommended here would be large signage, potentially earlier dates or earlier notifications, people were aware. But let, let me just, I'm trying to think about hypothetically, if someone was going to go, I don't know, redo their, their kitchen, would they be, so that falls, so what, where do you draw...
That's a discretionary, that wouldn't be a discretionary permit. That's an, you know, that would be a building permit. So, you're talking about, you're talking about a residential?
Yeah. So, what would be the trigger for that?
Trigger for that would be a design review. So, in other words, if they were altering the outside of the exterior of their home...
What you're doing, your kitchen might involve, okay, so let me be more specific.
Okay.
So, let's say I want to knock down an exterior wall and go up or out or something. So, it's going to be omnipresent to everyone who lives in the community.
Right.
Are you, is this suggesting that we would have to, or that we would propose people have a 15-day notice so they could come in and appeal or discuss with ZDRB about what's being designed, or at least be participatory? What, I'm trying to figure out what this actually means.
Yeah. Well, I mean, in that case that you specifically mentioned, there would be a design review that would be done for that specific permit that you wanted to do. That would go to the zoning board.
Right.
The normal process would be right now that all the neighbors get a, get a notice in the mail that they may see or not see. I don't know, people don't look at their mail anymore. Believe me, I hardly look at it, because it's usually junk. And so, this would add, actually, that a, that a posting would have to be done on the property, so that your neighbors that were walking by would know that it was, was happening. So, it's really no, it's no, it's not changing our process. It's not, it's not doing anything different.
Do we do that today?
We don't. And I want to expand.
Yeah, we don't do that now.
You're, this is an action plan consistent with the council's adopted strategic plan that talked about how do we foster civic engagement and greater transparency. So, over time, when we've listened to people, and I think a great example right now is people have called up and said, "What's going on on the RH lot?" If you go up, we've got story polls, but we don't have anything saying, "Here's a project." We looked at this, and it's a typical tool that many communities use that we don't. And it's very consistent with this council's direction, that we look at ways to improve public awareness, and I would say that.
Okay.
So, this is all about putting something up and letting somebody know, "Something's going to happen here."
All right. So, let me, let me continue, because I, from a commercial standpoint, let me just exclude that from the line of my question. So, from a residential standpoint, my neighbor wants to slap a second story on. We, are you proposing, or are we suggesting here that they would put a sign or signage out in their front yard so that anyone who's walking by, or someone who has to walk by to go to their mailbox, they actually check every day, would have to walk by the sign, and would there be a period of time when it was there?
Right.
And is that going to be, would that be stipulated? I mean, is that, is that what's all being proposed?
That is in this...
That's what's being proposed. It's really just another, an additional notification that, that your neighbors would be able to see a sign posted that says something's coming up, and here's, here's my chance to find out what it is, and number two, see if I have any issues that I don't want to address the decision-makers about. So, that's really what it is.
You're talking about a couple of weeks of a sign, potentially, depending on what time we're...
15 days?
Right now, right now, it's 10 days. So, it would be 10 days prior.
But it's not six months. It's not like it's up during the entire construction phase.
No, 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 no.
Right, okay.
No, we don't hold people up that long when they want to come in. We move pretty quickly. But you could, there's certainly room for making that a longer period of time if the council was interested in that.
Okay. I just was trying to be certain that I understood. And I don't recall now the sizes. A two-foot by three-foot would be for a minor project? Is that what I read?
Right. That's, that's what, that's what we found is kind of a, you know, a more or less common size for smaller projects. And then these larger ones, four-by-eight, that's pretty big. I don't know if that's too big for Yountville or not, but that's kind of the consensus of what we've seen out there in the, in the literature.
If I recall correctly, we had those large signs for Stags U Lane, correct? When we were developing the parcels there, there was large, there was nothing?
No.
The developer might put them up as, you know, "Coming soon."
Oh, if they put a "For sale" sign on it.
Yeah, "For sale" or "Coming soon," or something like that.
I thought it was maybe...
Their logo was basically a rendering of the house, but it was really an advertisement for the homes for sale.
It wasn't about...
That was long after the process we're talking about.
Okay, okay, thank you. So, it's in, it's in advance of that, so everyone has the ability to be aware. So, it's, again, providing more communication, transparency.
Just more communication.
Okay, thank you. Now, I understand. My question's answered.
Yeah. So, my question was going to be how you got to these sizes, because I think four-by-eight is too big for any site we have in town. And I don't think even two-by-three is necessary for a residential, because all of these are basically pedestrian. We're asking anybody to see the content of these things, to get out of their vehicle or be walking by. So, I don't see any reason for it to be four-by-eight. I think that, we look at the sign that's out right now at the vacant lot, that's four-by-eight, I think, the one down from Ranch Market in the vacant lot there.
That is correct.
That's big. And I don't think it's necessary that, that we put a notice and a concept drawing so that it can be seen from 100 feet away. So, I would reduce the size. My feedback would be reducing the scale of both sizes. I get the fact that a commercial site probably needs a little bit larger version, but anybody curious enough about what the project is can get up close to a smaller sign. Because I just, I don't like the, the, you know, visual noise that a sign would make, even if it's only for, you know, 15 days or so.
So, we could, we could do the, the commercial size being the two-by-three, and then we could actually have the residential ones or the minor projects be just an eight-and-a-half by 11 piece of paper on a, you know, on a pole. I've seen that... I've seen that done.
Especially, I think, we also don't want to intrude on the space. In, in the vice mayor's scenario, I don't want a two-by-three-foot sign for two weeks in front of my house if I'm doing a, you know, my landscape, you know, redesign.
Right.
You know, I think it's, I, I just don't think that's necessary.
It's a scam.
But I do like the idea of providing on the site a description, visual if possible, and, and text if, if also necessary to explain what's happening, because I know we have heard, whether it be land use decisions or other decisions, that people say, "I've been out of town," like your scenario, "I missed it, I didn't see it in the, in the mail." And this really puts it on the site so that anybody nearby can witness it.
On that topic, because you're talking about size, just to kind of put it in perspective, right now, we do an eight-and-a-half by 11 notice. It doesn't really allow a lot of opportunity for, when you talked about visuals, because you, I'm responding to what you just said, where you want some information, some details and pictures. We're not going to get that on an eight-and-a-half by 11.
Can we just say no larger than two-by-three feet and use your discretion if it's a project that needs...
I'm thinking you're giving us some guidance. I just want to caution you that I think, you know, the town clerk does a lot of notice postings, so we could get information about what it is, a discretion. It's going to look more like that, so somebody can read it. Eight-and-a-half by 11, and we direct them to come to Town Hall, talk to the planners, staff.
That's really what the eight-and-a-half by 11 would be.
That's what I'm saying. That makes sense for the residential.
This is a notice, this is not a ZDRB presentation on a stick.
It's not a picture.
And then the larger, the two-by-three can be used on commercial projects, and we have more room.
Yeah.
That'll make the paper.
All right.
Okay. So, any member of the public? We have one member of the public here. Now's your chance. Okay, any further discussion by council? I know we're just offering direction tonight. Councilor Mueller?
I don't want anything in the neighborhoods. I just don't think that's necessary, especially if you're sending out notices to the relevant neighbors. I don't think we really need to broadcast that. I think, you know, we just have to keep working on our neighborhoods to make our neighborhoods our own little kingdoms there, and if somebody really wants to know, they can come knock on my door, and it's like, you know, "What are you doing?" I'd be more than happy to explain. So I, I just don't want any signage at all in the neighborhoods, and I think that certainly in my neighborhood, we've had a lot of construction and businesses, and then, you know, people don't move in for a while, they see something going on, and people get robbed. I mean, I, I just think that the less notification that, you know, something's going on and something's changing, the better. So I'm, I don't want anything in the residential section, that's my idea. And then the, the two-by, three-foot signs that might go in front of a business, is this just like a piece of wood that you're going to attach an eight-by-11 piece of paper on? Are you going to redo something, or is there going to be like the town logo? I mean, what does that look like?
Well, there was, there was an attachment that was kind of taken from another community.
Oak Park.
Basically just, it doesn't have a picture, it just has, you know, just some information that says, "Here's what the project's called, this is what it's going to do. For more information, contact the town of Yountville," and...
So is this like a piece of wood, and then you're just going to put a piece of paper on top of it that could get rained on, or...
Yeah, there would be a sample. It wouldn't be a piece of paper. I mean, we, we would require this to be, this, this is for large projects, so it would have to be professionally done, so that there would be...
But it's only there for 10 days?
Well...
15?
It would, that, and the appeal, and the appeal period, then afterwards. So it'd be, you know, whatever days you guys are suggesting, and I would really like to get some input, if you think 10, 10 days is enough for something else, we should consider something else, and then there, whatever the appeal period is, you know, afterwards. So it would be up for, you know, three weeks, something like that.
I do want to share just...
How much does this cost?
It doesn't cost us anything.
Right, the applicant will pay for it. This is all, I do want to share that there was a recent neighborhood project that staff has received a number of inquiries about, because people didn't feel that they fully understood what was going on. So not all neighborhood situations are the same. And I think what we're trying to look at, first of all, 95% of what people are doing to the house, their internal remodels and all that, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about here when somebody's adding on an addition, or they're changing the facade of the front, or they're adding that second story. So I want to be really clear about what we're talking about, what's really going to go in a single family. It's a very limited number of applications. It's not the, "I'm renovating the kitchen, I'm putting a pool in the backyard." No, that's not what's going to trigger it. It's that alteration of the property visual from the street and the interaction with the neighbors that's going to trigger that. And then the commercials, the whole gamut, so that everybody's aware of what's going on commercially.
Right. Councilor Doran Becker?
Are, in a situation like that, when someone is having a second story put on, are the neighbors around them not notified?
No, they are. And I'm going to say to you, but the thing is, it's a question for you, and I'm just going to leave, you've asked us to improve our outreach. What we're finding is, we put stuff out there, we send the notices, and people still call and say, "I didn't get it, I didn't understand what was happening." And I'm just saying, you have asked us to look at improving our ways of communicating. So I'm just sharing with you that we're hearing, you know, trust me, we know that people have a love-hate relationship with signs in Yountville, we get that. But I'm just saying, this is a current situation where the town faced some criticism on a recent residential application, because a lot of the neighbors felt that they were not adequately, part of it's their own responsibility that several of them did, but they didn't pay attention to the notice, and a number of them said, because of the number of people walking, this would have been really helpful. And that's all I can say. We've had two neighborhood situations that have generated, both are not in the same neighborhood. You may recall the Talent, there was a project in Talent Lane that had significant neighborhood participation. So we're hearing this recently, and this has been, some of the feedback has come from residents that have said, "This is standard in many other communities, why aren't you looking at it?" So I'm just giving you some, some perspective of where we're coming from and what we're bringing before you.
Okay. Yeah.
Well, I like the idea in a commercial district of having these signs. I think that they are necessary, really. They not only inform our citizens, but our visitors of development, which I think is a good thing. And I suppose in, in a residential neighborhood where the out, you know, the exterior appearance of a house was going to change, or they were going to add a second story, that would make sense to have something small, but maybe not have to have it up as long as the others, just have it up for a week, and by that time, they're, everybody who lives around them should have seen it. I, you know, I also don't like signs in the neighborhoods.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, as, as evidenced by my original line of questioning, I'm not a big fan of putting a sign up, and I'm not necessarily suggesting I'm going to do it in my front yard, because I have nothing, I can't afford to send my kids to college at this point. But the reality is, I, I don't see it necessarily in the residential neighborhoods as being as critical and/or as, as imperative and important as it is in the commercial or in a larger project. You know, we all know who our neighbors are, and I, and I believe I know the project the town manager is referencing, and frankly, I, you know, I think there were other council members that weren't necessarily aware of exactly what the project entailed when they came to the meetings as well. So that said, you know, we need to inform ourselves better. You know, if you get a notice, I guess the responsibility, you know, the onus is on the individual when you get them. I think if you extended the number of days in which you gave someone the opportunity to receive the notice to 15 days, would be fine. I think on large projects, I think a sign, not necessarily four-by-eight feet, you know, up to two-by-three, you know, I'm, I'm not going to tell you a scale, but I would say something larger is, is okay, but maybe not as big as presented. But in the residential areas, I, 15 days is adequate notice. If, if you don't get your mail, or if you go out of town for three weeks, you know, you're lucky you got to be out of town for three weeks, and I'm sorry the notice missed you. We can't, we can't change everything, and we can't stop our lives and the planning around it, you know, three, 15 days, is that business days? Is that my assumption? 15 business days could be a notice period? That seems pretty adequate to me. Those are my comments.
The 10-day right now is, is that 10 business days or 10 calendar days?
Business days. It's a calen, it's calendar. I think it's calendar days, yeah.
Then I would recommend that we consider business days, because that usually includes weekend days as well. 15 business days is adequate notice, in my opinion, for most things.
You're talking about written notice?
Written notice, correct. Mailing to an address, and, and, you know, the town has done a good job at trying to do outreach to those people that aren't living in town, and I, and I know you guys do that.
I do want to point out, you already have an ordinance that outlines that, and the staff's not recommending changing that. This was...
This was for something different.
Project identification signage, so if, you're, you're bringing up a whole nother issue, if you'd like us to change the noticing.
But it entailed the number of days you wanted to have those signs, and my recommendation would be, rather than posting a large sign, would be to expand the number of days. You're asking me for comment on this particular project, and I'm not encouraging, in the residential area, that we start posting signs every time someone wants to, you know, do an add-on to their house. You know, you do a written notice 10 days, maybe you make it 15. That's my recommendation.
Instead of a sign.
Comments. Yeah, instead of a sign.
Okay. And I'm fine, I'm, I'm fine if there was a sign at a residential site identifying it, but I'm also fine if, I agree with the vice mayor, and if we didn't do that on-site, then I would extend the minimum written notice period as a, as a different option. I do think the RH property is a perfect example of, the story polls mean absolutely nothing to most people that haven't seen the renderings. They know, okay, there's something happening, but what the heck is it? And, and to have a description, a visual description on-site, I think makes total sense. What I would also say, and the, I know this isn't, in the, your project notification sign specification attachment, I don't think the explanations for what triggers a major versus a minor project is, is clear at all to the, to the public. To say a conditional use permit triggers a minor project, or a subdivision of four or less lots, I think we're assuming that people understand municipal jargon here, and so I would at least have examples of what we're talking about, so that people don't see this as, if I'm changing, you know, the appliances in my kitchen, then I've triggered something here that doesn't apply. So I think if we move forward with this, I would, I don't, we don't really have a draft yet of this proposed notification.
Well, you do, but I think what I would say, we're hearing loud and clear that the general consensus direction of the council is you're interested in a sign identification program for commercial use only, still a smaller sign at two-foot by three, and we'll bring back some details, but I'm, I'm not hearing support for residential. And I would also suggest...
I would say no more than two-by-three feet. I don't think it's necessary to be even that size in some cases, so I think that can be staff discretion.
So we have, we can get some feedback on that and move forward.
And in, and in terms of notifying the public about what these terms all mean, they would be told, I mean, once this is, is put in place, they would be told what they had to, had to produce. So it's not really anything that, that somebody's going to come in and read this and wonder, "Do I have to do this or not?" They'll, they would be informed as to what the requirements were, and we would make sure that they put those in place by the time we told them they needed to have them up.
But we will bring something back focusing on the commercial side and a smaller scale.
Okay, great. Enough guidance?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. We are going to move on to, we have staff informational, do we have any staff informational reports?
Just really quick, oh.
Go ahead.
Oh, just really quickly, I wanted to update you on the community center repair project. We, as of this week, the skylight repairs will be done, so that the tarping will come off the community center, hopefully permanently. The kiosk barbecue area has been finished, the siding was fully replaced, the wood cleaned and resealed, and that looks really great. You could stop by and take a look. It will mimic what the community hall will look like when it's finished, and then the siding will be replaced on the main community center, and then we're going to be budgeting in a future year for the wood refinishing and sealing on that building. The hall, the siding on the backside of the building is almost complete. The flooring in the main community center was completed, and we moved back in last week. If you've been in, it, it's a huge difference, as well as the restrooms at the main community center. The flooring in there was also replaced with an epoxy floor. There's new toilet fixtures and hand, water fixtures in the sinks as well. Coming up, the HVAC repairs will begin Thursday of this week. The new equipment has arrived, and they'll be delivering that, and they'll start with some minor ductwork and move forward. A big part of the HVAC contract is retraining our staff on those systems, so that'll come as well. Next week, the sheriff's department flooring will be installed, so they'll be moving out for the week into our founder's room. That would be their temporary office. There will be a pod located on Mulberry Street. We have applied and are waiting for our encroachment permit. It is only for one week to house the sheriff's department furniture temporarily while that flooring is replaced, and will move, be removed on Saturday. So it will be there less than seven days.
That's not the holding cell.
That's not the holding cell, no. As a reminder, so the biggest piece of this that will impact is the closure of the hall from four weeks, July and August, but we are on track for September completion as, as of now. No real issues have come up. Everything's on budget and on track. Thanks.
Great, thank you very much. Any other reports?
I have one other. Just, I passed out a flyer. We recently received notification that we were approved for the home program, and all our agreements are signed, as well as the Cal Home program. The Cal Home program is a $330,000 program that's available to low-income people for residential repairs to their homes, and there's $500,000 in the federal home program. So we are, if you, I think you've probably already talked about how this program's being administered. The city of Napa Housing Department is actually serving as a staff for this project. The, the involvement by the town of Yountville is really similar, just to try to advertise it and make sure that all of our residents know that it's available. So we are going to be involved in a public information campaign. These flyers will be sent to all of our affordable units in town, some other properties that we've identified, and then the staff people from the city of Napa are going to be setting up workshops at the mobile, mobile home parks, so that those residents are avail, are aware of what's available out there for repairs to their residential properties. The, the interesting thing about, that I've learned about this program is the Cal Home, the Cal Home program, which is the California program, is completely forgivable. After a 20-year period, if the person stays in the home for 20 years, the loan is forgiven. The federal home program comes with a lot more strings, of course, because it's federal money. Things like prevailing wages are required for contractors and that sort of thing. That program is a due-on-sale program. It's, there's no payments due, and it's due on sale. So, you know, that program is also attractive, but might not be as attractive as the Cal Home program, because there are non-pervailing wages on the Cal Home program. There are resale limits on the sale of the homes. There's a lot of strings that, that, you know, there's a lot of work that the city of Napa is going to be doing for us to screen applicants and to put them in contact with contractors. And then I was telling Kathleen earlier, the, the contracts for the work on the homes are actually between the homeowner and the contractor. However, the city of, the town of Yountville will actually be providing the payments to the contractors directly, and then we will in turn bill the programs and get reimbursed. So we get, we're, we're going to be putting, frending some of the money for this, and then getting reimbursed from either the feds or the state for the program. And so one of the things, we're really going to try to, to get some of this money spent, because if we don't spend 50% of the funds, then you're not eligible in the next cycle. So we have until next June of 2016 to obligate at least 50% of the funds, or we won't be able to apply again in the future. The federal program is a little bit behind the Cal program, because we won't receive actually our ability to start funding those loans until June, and they do that right to start funding those loans until June, and they do that right before the next allocation is available. And we won't be able to apply, obviously, next year, because we don't have, we haven't spent any funds this year. So that program, in essence, becomes an every-other-year program. So I think this is our first time to do this program, and we'll see how it goes, but we're gonna be involved in just making sure that our residents know that it is in existence. We'll be putting links on our website to the application, as well as the flyers, and would encourage you to give us any feedback as to how we might be able to do better outreach, so.
So was this flyer generated internally? We did?
We did that flyer, yes.
So what's the point of the wheelchair-disabled logo at the bottom?
Um...
There's no reference to-
Well, the only thing, in terms of the federal program, it does require that the home be completely ADA accessible.
Accessible, yeah, that's a component.
Not the California program, but the federal program does require it to be completely accessible. So they'll come in and do an assessment, and as part of the loan program, we'll have to do other upgrades, even if they're just trying to do some things. That program would then require other things to be done.
I'm just thinking, there's no explanation for that, and if there's a difference between the two programs, maybe there should be.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just looking at that, saying, okay, is this so that you can convert your home if you need disabled access?
Well, that is one of the things that you can use the funds for, so.
There's no way to understand that from that, I think, so. Just my feedback on that.
We'll improve that, thank you.
Anything? Any other thoughts on that? Did I see you leading forward with an informational report?
Well, I might like to take a quick opportunity to introduce the lawyer-looking fellow who snuck in the back room. He is, in fact, a lawyer.
He doesn't just look like one?
He's my colleague, David Ruderman, from the Penn Valley Office. He's our senior litigator in Northern California, and also the city attorney of Lakeport. And he's, I think, on his way home and dropped in to say hello and meet the council and the folks in Town Hall. So I just want to introduce him. You may hear from him from time to time.
That's quite a commute you have.
Well, the council meeting in Lakeport didn't last quite as long as this one. I have a hearing tomorrow at the Capitol, so.
Oh, there you go. Well, we'll be finished by tomorrow.
I'll see you tomorrow.
We think, we have closed session. That's up to your colleague. Okay, thank you. So we're gonna move on to council reports. I did not attend today's city selection committee meeting, nor the flood control, but I do have a report on Napa County Transportation and Planning Agency. There was a day-long retreat held here at Hotel Yountville on the 15th, where St. Helena City Councilmember Peter White, actually Vice Mayor Peter White, was appointed the vice chair of the agency, and I'm currently still the chair this year. The big item from that retreat was the approval of purchasing nine new buses for the Vine Transit System at a $4.5 million price tag. And also, we spent almost the whole day discussing branding of the agency and ways to enhance services for the community. So that happened just last week. Upper Valley Waste Management, is there anything of note?
Yes. Sorry, I wish I could give you a short report, but I can't.
A short one will be fine.
Sorry, not gonna happen tonight. We met yesterday, and when we met, I was not given this ahead of time, but we were handed it during the meeting. It's 55 pages, and in here, I'm just, I will just highlight some of the 55 pages. They, there's a trust fund that is set up for all landfills for the closure. And money goes into that fund, but they have found that they are short $2 million in that fund. And that's just as of 2015. So the lifetime of the landfill goes to 2047, and so there's gonna be even greater shortages after that. Also, for clarity, there are two companies. We have Clover Flat, which is the landfill, that's where the C and D line is, and we also have Upper Valley Disposal Services, and that's the one behind Rutherford Grove. And to back up a minute, this report was Bob Pistone hired Edgar and Associates to let him know, you know, what are all the possible upgrades that, you know, can be done to his private property, and that's what's all in here. And so the upgrades include probably about $8.6 million up at Clover Flats, known as the dump, you know, big-ticket items like biogasification units, which just take wood chips and turn it into char. Also, at the Upper Valley Disposal, some of the things they want to do include $2 million for new CNG trucks, but they also want $1 million to run a CNG pipeline from Napa someplace up to refill the trucks. Also, to do all this, of course, you know, they're, would like for the ratepayers to pay for all this, but they're gonna have the agency that I sit on their board float these bonds, and, because we don't have any money either, so. And they would also like for us to extend their contract for both the landfill and the recycling center. They both expire, I think, in 2025, and they'd like for us to, in addition to all this, extend the contract for 20 years. So this is a pretty big-ticket item. There was a lot of information here. And I would just like to request that staff kind of analyze this document, maybe by, and also have a meeting with the JPA staff to help understand all the obligations and the elements and these just projected numbers, what they really mean, like, long-term for the ratepayer, and report back for the council, because I really think this is such a big, costly endeavor that we really need to understand it, instead of one single person representing Yountville approve this. So, you know, and I think we also really need to evaluate, I mean, you know, all these benefits that the ratepayers are going to pay, you know, do benefit a private company, so maybe that's something that our attorney could weigh in on. So that's my report and my request.
Okay, thank you. Next on our list, Napa County League of Governments meeting. That was held down at the Runway Restaurant at the Napa Airport, and legislative update was given by our Congressman, Mike Thompson. Next up, North Bay Division of the League of California Cities. We kind of co-hosted that for Napa County just last week. It was held at City Winery, and the keynote speakers and presentations were made by Napa Mayor Jill Tekel and Vallejo Mayor Osby Davis regarding the natural disaster response following the Napa earthquake, and how jurisdictions were able to work together, and how to properly at least attempt to get FEMA and state emergency support. And there was also a tour Mayor Tekel gave of the downtown Napa area to show not only quake recovery, but also the significant progress made for the flood bypass channel down there also. And there were several of us in attendance at that dinner meeting. I have a couple other things here, but are there any other meeting reports from that? Seeing none?
I have.
Okay, another meeting report?
Yeah, I attended the Environmental Quality Committee for the California League of Cities in Ontario last, the week before last. And there were three major bills that we were talking about. One was alluded to earlier, it's SB 47, for the environmental health for synthetic, synthetic turfs. And again, all these things that are coming up about the adverse health impacts, it all relates to petroleum products that are in this, and that's where these health concerns are coming. So one side of the coin, there's been a lot of studies done, and they haven't proven anything. On the other hand, there is a request for a lot more studies to be done. So it's kind of divided at this point, and this bill's gonna address that. Another one that we, I think unanimously voted against SB 3, or against its support, was SB 337. This is a Jackson bill, and they wanted to include, in our general plan, every time we did the housing element, we'd also have to do a safety element, and that safety element would have to address climate adaptation and resiliency strategies. And we just really felt that was too onerous, that everybody, when they have to do their safety element, should do it. It shouldn't be tied and mandated to the housing element. And the final one, AB 45, it's hazardous household waste. Right now, we are mandated by the state for recycling and for diversions from the landfills, but there's nothing that really regulates or mandates hazardous household waste. This bill, I think, goes a little far. They want to increase collection of hazardous household waste on a door-to-door collection diversion program, and I think it's really hard to control toxic chemicals when you just put them on your doorstep, is like a simple way to put it. So that one's not, wasn't gonna be supported by the league either. So that's my update.
Thank you. Two other things that are somewhat related. I attended the first meeting of the County Agricultural Protection Advisory Committee, APAC. Last Monday, I was elected vice chair of that committee. Ted Hall, who is in the wine industry, was elected chair of that committee. The thing that I was quite surprised about is, it was voted on and unanimously approved to go from two-hour meetings every Monday, or every first and third, second and fourth Monday. Two Mondays a month, from two hours to three hours each meeting. So why use up only half the morning when you can use the entire morning up? But I think that does speak to the fact that the committee is taking it seriously to have extensive dialogue, is what I will call it. I also, in the same, in the same theme, I attended last Sunday, the 47th anniversary celebration of the Agricultural Preserve, which was also an opportunity to celebrate the life of Foker Isola, and all the work that he had done to both create and protect the agricultural lands in the valley. That was up at Charles Crew Winery. So ironically, I think every member of the APAC committee was at that celebration. We could have started meeting right then. That's all I have. Any other announcements?
Actually-
Councilor Dornbecker?
I thought I had reported on my, I did attend also the League of California Cities Community Services Policy Committee meeting, which I referenced earlier this evening. And we discussed supporting a bill that, and we did vote as a whole, to support a bill that is going to make it illegal to sell vape cigarettes to children under the age of 18. And then we also approved an amendment to that bill that specifies that not just tobacco products, but other products, that they are calling things like Hello Kitty and Fruit Loops and things like that, that nobody really knows what those, those essences are. But that is also going to be illegal to sell to children under the age of 18 in the state of California. That's what we supported, that bill.
Thank you.
That came out of that. And then I just wanted to mention that the Watershed Information and Conservancy, we changed our name, is hosting a water symposium on May 15th at City Winery, right on the Napa River. And it starts at nine in the morning, and it's going, State Senator Lois Wolk will be the keynote speaker at it, and I highly encourage you to attend. I encouraged also our new Go Green team members to attend that. That's it.
Thank you. And I know we have some closed-session items here. I'm assuming we still are going into closed session. So with that, I just wanted to make the announcement, now that we will be adjourning tonight's meeting in memory of Ellicates. I know we did open with a moment of silence earlier tonight, but for those that won't be here for the 30 seconds when we report out of our closed session, I wanted to make sure that was on the record and people knew about that. So we will now adjourn into closed session. Oh, do we anticipate any reportable action? Mike or Steve? Do we anticipate any reportable action from closed session tonight?
That's what we were just discussing.
We don't.
It's possible.
It's possible, okay.
You will more than likely give direction that will, but there could be reportable action.
It's possible, okay. That's all we need at this point. So we will go into closed session. Thank you.